Okay, welcome everybody. It's seven o'clock. I'm councillor Terrenay and in my role of acting mayor, as is protocol for the council, we rotate every two months to chair the committee of the whole. So I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. We acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the coast and strait Salish peoples. Specifically, we recognize the La Quangan-speaking people known today as the Songhees and the Squamont Nations, and that their historic connections to these lands continue to this day. And please note, everybody, that you'll be, there's a video recording on the meeting that are streamlined and archived on the municipal website. So, we have a fairly full agenda here this evening with a number of land use applications, but to begin with, we have the minutes of the Parks and Rec and Culture Commission, and we have here the director of Parks, Rec and Culture and acting chair, I suppose. Is that right? Okay, good. So I guess I'll ask the director if you'd like to speak to any key issues on the, in the minutes, and then we'll bring it back to the committee for some questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, I think the minutes are pretty self-explanatory, but there were a number of folks that spoke to the commission on various issues related to dogs off-leash in parks. Some looking for more flexibility at Willow's Beach, some looking for less off-leash access to environmentally sensitive areas in Uplands Park, Cattle Point, and Anderson Hill Park. And so you'll, you'll note that there was a resolution passed by the commission looking to strengthen the animal control bylaw with respect to providing protection for endangered species in the ecosystem. And there were the art installations for the 2018-2019 Arts Alive Initiative. There were ten sites that are repeat sites that were approved and two new sites at McNeil Bay and at Willow's Beach on Esplanade. And, and the remainder of the meeting, I believe, was, was devoted to normal monthly reports and typical discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. So we'll turn to the committee if there's any questions to the director. Councillor Kirby.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question about the discussion that took place around dogs off-leash at Uplands and Cattle Point. This has come up before, and we initially asked for some more public consultation around this issue, just, I think mostly because I think there's a lack of public education. And since that time, I know we've installed the kiosks at Uplands Park, which helped to educate people about the, the environmental sensitivity of the area, as well as the new marine kiosk at Cattle Point. But I, I just feel like it would be, might be helpful to the community if the signage came with public education as well, other opportunities. And I don't know how we might achieve that, but through, you know, maybe some more walks or public activities that, that, and we already do quite a bit with friends of Uplands Park, but I do think that the message needs to be, get a wider spread, so that there is a general understanding of the fact that there are, how rare those plants are on Cattle Point, and how incredibly sensitive that environment is. When somebody like myself, who has a large, large dog, that, and I considered, I thought I was fairly informed until I spent some time volunteering with Margaret and Wiley, and really truly understood the, how those tiny little, little plants interact, and how important it is for the biodiversity of the region. I, I really didn't understand the impact of my dog and myself. And if we're going to be going down that road, I'd also suggest that part of the plan, or part of the parks plan, might be to look at that as a, as in a bigger picture. Because we are seeing more and more buses stop there, and every time those buses stop, we have fifty people, maybe more, hundred people get off, and tromp all around, and not, not being tourists, not having any awareness of the value of the, the ecosystem. So, just, and how sensitive and rare those plants are. So I, I feel like we are, we've done so much work, we, I'm, the royal we, Wiley and Margaret and the team have put in so much work, and Chris Heidley, to restore the, those areas, and to see the, them thriving and, and these wonderful canis meadows coming back, and, but not knowing that there are other little plants in there that are incredibly rare and, and contributing to our biodiversity, bigger picture. So I, I just, there's, there's a lot more to this, I think. This is one aspect of it, and I'm glad we're having this discussion. But I'd hope that more public education comes with it than just a sign. And so I hope that there might be some activities that you could come up with through the recreation center programming and parks. I don't know if that's something that I need to make a motion to, or it can be just a suggestion to staff to consider, or the commission to consider.
So, so, why don't, maybe we can hold on to that, Councillor Kirby, and let's just hear what the rest of the discussion is, and we can come back to that point, okay? Okay, thank you. Councillor Zalka.
Thank you, Chair. A question through you relating to the, the first proposed motion that was put forward by, and carried by, by the Parks, Rec and Culture Commission. I was wondering if you could possibly comment a little bit on what was moved and seconded by the commission? Is this a proposal to make things more, more lax, more, more, more available for dogs, or more restrictive for dogs? I wasn't quite sure what, what, what this wording was suggesting. More effective protection for endangered species, I'm pretty as clear, but just to develop revisions, I wasn't quite sure what that meant.
Through the chair, I'll take a stab at that, and certainly, there were a couple other people here that were at that meeting that might want to weigh in. Certainly, the, the gist of that motion, in staff's view, was that the commission was looking for stronger language in the animal control bylaw to protect the natural areas. And that, that would mean, I guess, less access for dogs, and certainly less off-leash access.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Hi, Starling Terry, and I was chairing the meeting at the time. And I agree with what Ray said around looking for stronger protections. However, I think there was a recognition at the commission that this is a very complex issue, and that it, it does require a lot of thought and public consultation. And it, because we have a network of parks, it's not, you can't just do one thing in one park and not recognize the impacts on other parks. And therefore, we worded the recommendation broadly to allow for the development of a plan to support how the municipality might go forward with actually implementing that recommendation. I just make one other comment, that there was another recommendation related to this at the meeting that was around doing more education. And admittedly, the recommendation initially is just around more signs, because we felt that the Uplands signs had been so well received, that Anderson Hill in particular, and Cattle Point could benefit from some of those as at least a first step to help get that education up and, up and running. So I hope that helps.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. I, I appreciate the comments, and it gives me a consideration for possibly supporting, supporting maybe a, a, a look-see at what could possibly be changed. But I do know that here in Canada, with our federal laws trumping, or overruling the provincial laws, provincial laws overruling our own, our own bylaws, being a Victoria Harbour migratory bird sanctuary, which surrounds our wonderful district, I believe these regulations, these federal regulations and laws allow federal employees, federal wildlife protection employees, if they find a dog or a cat in the wildlife migratory bird sanctuary that is doing any sort of harassment of the wildlife that is meant to protect, I believe they are authorized to destroy on-site any dog or cat that they find doing anything to, to the wildlife. And I think it would be very good if we informed our public of that, because that is independent of our bylaws. So I would certainly support signage to help our, our public, our dog-loving and cat-loving public be aware that while we don't see federal parks employees walk, doing their walkabout too often, they are authorized. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councillor Braithwaite.
I just wanted to add that I think part of the conversation that we had around the Parks, Rec and Culture Commission meeting was in regards to the fact that there used to be signage at Anderson Park, and that that signage had gone by the wayside, hadn't been replaced. And so that's really what they were looking for, is to have that particular signage replaced there. And then the conversation came about to having similar signage at Uplands Park and other areas as well.
Okay, so, Councillor Murdock.
Thank you through you, Chair. I'll just reiterate what councillor Kirby said. I think this is, the issue of dogs in the park is one, but it's part of an overall, I think, strategy that we'd have to look at. The reality is, it's the only large park we have in Oak Bay for people to go for walks, and it's not like people will just move to another large park. Every other park I have, I think, can be crossed in one minute or less. That's one of the few you can actually go for a proper walk-in. So I think we have to account for that and, and balance the needs of all the users of it, and more so than just at this table. I, and for that, I think, you know, if the, if the request here is for us to support the parks taking that on, as a, as a Parks, Rec and Culture taking that on as a, as a, as a recommendation, I'd be absolutely supportive of that. I think that's probably more appropriate for that nuance to come from the, from the, the commission than it is from here, because I think it needs to be looked at. Obviously, very supportive of the sign. I don't think it has to, that does not require any input from us, I think, to move those signs forward, as I understand it. And then I guess the other question here is also, that was raised, was the question of dog times extended on Willow's Beach, and the question of whether or not we want to tackle that here as well. I'm kind of inclined personally not to. I think there is a, this has come back and forth a couple of times in the time I've been on council, and I think the balance has always been trying to strike that every other beach allows dogs, and having one that's pristine, that's a destination beach for tourists, and for residents from all over the region to come and not have viewer on the, on the, on the logs and, and surprises in the sand, is, was deemed to be sort of the appropriate balance. But I'm always curious to hear more arguments on that, but I would think that would be something to reconsider, again, in the broader context of all the dog parks.
Okay, Councillor Kirby.
One final suggestion is that if this is considered, like last time I raised this, I said that, you know, more public consultation before any implementation were to take place, I think is necessary, because bringing people onboard as the bylaw changes are being made is much easier than, than to let people know after the fact. And so everybody making an informed decision together will be more effective. So, and one other suggestion I have is that using half of the park, Uplands Park is, I think, becoming divided in two almost, because there's the one side that's on the Cattle Point side that is being restored beautifully by our, the efforts of the, the grant money, and the other side that is just an impossible wall of ivy, basically, and daphne. And so that area, I think, maybe a compromise might be struck where we allow dogs in that side. But that's something for the commission to consider and staff to, to provide advice on, not my place to, to go there, but it's just an idea.
Thank you, Councillor Kirby. I'm going to point to Mr. Jones, if you could speak to the issue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, not something that staff usually do, but at the end of this report is actually to provide you with a suggestion that we move this issue to a, to the discussion with council around priorities. This is a, a very complex and compli, complicated issue, and, you know, there's going to be a need for significant public engagement. And it's not something that staff can just kind of do now. And so we want to make sure that this is something that council feels is important, and it may very well be. But before we start expending significant resources on this item, we would like to have you consider this item in conjunction with all the other priorities that are going to come for you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Jones, would that need a separate motion, if that were the will of the committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at the end of, there's a, a note, explanatory note from the Director of Corporate Services, and at the end, there, there is an option, should council choose, or sorry, committee choose, at the request of the Parks Recreation Culture Commission to develop revisions to the animal control bylaw to provide further, sorry, to provide effective protection for endangered species and the ecosystem be referred to council's priority setting sessions, discussions. I'd just, just like to point out, we are, at a staff level, working on a revision to our animal control bylaw, looking at fees for, you know, penalties, that type of thing. And this would move in line with that. But I think it's important for council to realize that there will be a need to consult with the community on this. And that's going to take a significant time and resources, which is really important. And I think at the end of the day, council will want to respond to, to the community. And right now, we don't have enough information on what the community is suggesting. And so we're saying, you know what, this is something that's important, but it needs to be considered in conjunction with council's other priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I mean, I'll just throw my two-pits in. I, I mean, thank you to the commission for bringing this forward and, and the motion. I, I, I fully agree with what the committee's speaking to, and, and staff as well, that this is, it is complex, and it's bringing together different user needs and concerns. And it's, it's complex, and there's a bit of tension. We get that in the letters that are coming forward here. And so this idea of bringing the community together for a, a community conversation, so that we can ramp up the awareness and understanding of our parks, and also come to terms with what some of the dog owner needs are to, to steer that as well, seems, seems appropriate and, and timely. So there is a motion that staff has put together here. Mr. Jones just read it. Has the committee got that before you?
I-
Yeah, there's two motions, yeah.
I'll move the first motion, that with, that the minutes of the meeting of the Oak Bay Parks Recreation Culture Commission held on May 2nd, with the exception of the recommendation to request council to develop revisions to the animal control bylaw to provide effective protection for endangered species and the ecosystem be approved.
Okay, moved by councillor Kirby, seconded by councillor Murdock. Is there any further discuss, oh yeah, councillor Murdock.
Just a procedural question. I just want to make sure, in the original report that came out, it, it separated out the approvals of the sighting for all the things. That is, that was just, I guess, a copy error, is it? That we've already done that in the past, and we don't have to do it tonight? There's no requirement for us to do anything at this table for approving the locations of the art? Is that correct? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Zalka.
I had a similar question, and apologies if I missed the meeting. Has the, relating to the other motion that's in, that's in the minute, that minutes, relating to the, the location of the, of the artworks that are out in the water. I know that that is, has some dissension for some, for some of our public. Has this been decided, or has it been, been, been put to a different place? Because I need to understand. It's a different item?
Separate item. I, I'll let staff-
As long as it's a separate item, because I'm not-
It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Do we, if, okay, so assuming that is the case, and is next on the agenda, I think that's great. But do we then not need to exclude it from approval of the minutes?
Yeah, that's-
I just want to confirm that.
Yeah, that's one of the other motions here, okay?
We do?
Councillor Zalka, do, have you got enough information?
I apologize, I don't. Maybe, again, on the update, I don't see the, the exemption-
No, so the, the discussion on the location of the Oceanside artwork was not part of the Parks and Rec minutes discussion. That never came to them, so it's not part, doesn't form part of these minutes. It's part of a separate piece being brought forward, just to this committee, never went to Parks and Rec, so it doesn't have to be excluded.
Good. So, any further discussion? Not going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed, then opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
So I move the second motion, that the request of the Park Recreation and Culture Commission to develop revisions to the animal control bylaw to provide effective protection for endangered species and the ecosystem be referred to council's priority setting discussions.
Councillor Kirby, seconded by councillor Murdock. Discussion?
And, and I'm just going to reiterate that I hope that this will include a, an thorough and very in-depth public engagement process, and so that people like me with my dog can still find a spot to let him cool down in the summer, maybe at the, the boat launches, where I'm not touching anything that's sensitive. But I'm definitely, like, there's got to be lots of public engagement, or else we won't have buy-in, and it'll be an enforcement nightmare.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. To the Director of Parks Recreation and Culture, there's a notion in there that there's going to be additional signage put up. Does this exclude putting up additional signage in those areas, or would that have to wait for this public engagement?
Through the chair, the signage will move forward. It's, it was already signage that we have in place at, at Cattle Point and Uplands Park, and so we were just going to mirror the same signage at Anderson Hill.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed, then opposed? Thank you. So we're moving on to the item number two. Thank you very much, Ms. Terry and Mr. Herman. So, we've got the sea lure sculpture competition location. I'm going to turn to staff for an overview of the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope the, the report is straightforward. We have had in the community an individual that is willing to come forward with a very, very significant contribution to, to put some, I'll call it sea art in the community. And our arts laureate, Ms. Adams, has been working hard on that matter with, along with the arts committee. And she's much more capable than I to speak to that. However, what, at the end of the day, what the, the committee and council is being looked toward is to approve or recommend to the province that one of these two locations for that artwork is appropriate and be located. At the end of the day, this is not a decision for the municipality. Given the location of the, the two prospective areas where we would locate the art, that would ultimately be decisions of the provincial government. So I, I believe what's being asked is that we support the recommendations of the, the arts laureate and, and the committee to locate the piece of art in those, in that, one of those two locations.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So we have the art laureate here, Barb Adams, and a committee member, Ms. Lorte. Do you want to come up to the table, and we'll see if the committee has any questions? Have you? So, any questions, committee? Councillor Murdock.
Thank you through you, Chair. Just to confirm, it appears this is, the rock in the water appears to be the second one. The farther one out, the larger of the rock. There's a small rock close to shore and a large rock farther out. Just want to confirm that is, in fact, the correct rock that we're looking at.
On, okay. We're ready now. The rock is the rock that is a part of a rock outcropping, and it's in front of the trees in the middle of the bay. So, or, it's closer to shore than in the middle of the bay. It's in the, it's, there's a picture attached. The, we have, the rock has gone to, the latitude and longitude of that rock has gone to the federal government with Murray Rankin, and it has, there has, they have had, they have no issues with it. And accept that they will, of course, want to know what the engineer, should this go ahead, what the, what the base will, will be, what the engineered base will be, so that there will be no effect to the environment around. And it'll be strong enough to withstand the weather.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions to the arts laureate? Councillor Zalka.
Thank you, Chair, and, and thank you to my colleagues for helping me figure out which bay is which, and which rock is which, since it is a touch confusing. But now I think I've got it. So my question through you for the proponents of this art installation in, in, on a rock, is, in the water, is, what, what was your criteria, if I, if I may ask, for wanting to put, the first question, for wanting to put a piece of art out, separated from the shore? The number, sort of the first question. And the second question, do you have a preference between the two? Because I certainly have a preference in terms of leaning more towards one versus the other. But I would love to hear from you, please.
Okay, first of all, the, initially, when I became arts laureate, and we did the map, and we had approval in principle, there was a location, an X, in that bay. Now, I was told at the time, which is true, that that really is not municipal jurisdiction. And I said, well, we haven't got money to do that anyway, so. But what has happened is, the donor has chosen the rock. The donor came with the money, saying, I would really like a piece of art just off the break, off the retaining wall walk, so that everyone could enjoy Oak Bay as much as I've, he, he's saying this, I've enjoyed Oak Bay. Much, much pleasure that Oak Bay has given him. He was an investment banker in New York, and he's moved to Victoria and has lived here for the last twenty-five years, or thirty years of his retirement. Very involved in the community. And he actually chose that rock. And I was so excited, because I was hoping we would have an opportunity to do something on the rock.
And the second question was, is there a preference between, I guess, the rock that's described by photo one and two, versus the rock that's described by photo three, which is much further out in the water?
The rock, the rock, the first rock, or the rock that's attached to the shore, is actually attached to the shore at high tide. There's, it's, there's a grass walkway onto the rock. So it's actually part of the land. And it's not, it's not, it doesn't have, that is, if we don't get the order in council to get the rock in the water. The rock in the water is the first choice.
So, just a follow-up, and this question might have to go possibly through to staff. Just want to confirm that it looks like the rock described, that's, that's essentially attached to land at low tide, appears to be prevent, at low tide, yes. Well, maybe at high tide as well. But certainly, this photo shows what looks like a bit of a, of a low tide. During low tide, there, well, anyway, in photo- Well, anyway, in photo one and two, the rock appears to be accessible, and that appears to be, and I want to confirm with staff, under provincial jurisdiction, which lies between the high and the low tide for the lands. And the photo that's described by number three appears to be not provincial land, but land that would be under federal jurisdiction, which I guess would be also known as navigable waters. I just want to confirm that, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Both of those would be under provincial jurisdiction. They are below the high water mark, but not in, yeah, they're not in federal jurisdiction.
Okay, so, if there's no further questions from the Committee to the Arts Committee, then I'm going to go to the public and ask if there's anybody who'd like to speak to this issue. It appears not. Okay, so I'm going to come back to the Committee and ask for a motion, or any further discussion?
I would make the recommendation, staff recommendation, that we endorse the location of the sculpture on either Rock One or Rock Two.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Croft, second by Councillor Murdock. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Zelka?
I was to propose an amendment to that motion, which is to eliminate rock described by photo number three, also known as Rock Two, from the motion, so that council would be endorsing just the first rock, which is closer to land.
Okay, is there a secondor to that motion? It appears not. Okay, so we're back to the original motion? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Going to call the question. All in favor, opposed, non-opposed? One opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, we're on to item three. Thank you very much, Ms. Adams and Ms. Lorte, for coming out this evening. So, Parks Volunteers Recognition Policy. This is a report from the Director of Parks, and I'll ask staff to speak to the report.
Could I just give a little context here?
Yeah.
The context is the work that's been done by Margaret Jenkins Elementary School in Trafalgar Park. I was asked to go over and thank them during Earth Week, I think it was. And prior to that, the vice principal there had seen some recognition of schools who help in these kind of situations in other communities. And so, she sent a note to me and to Mr. Hyde Lay about whether or not that's possible. I, and I think it was brought to the attention of staff. These kids, if my recollection serves me correct, they donated 2,195 hours of work in that park. And so, I'm looking for ways to recognize them. I approached staff, and essentially what you have here is a question about if we're going to recognize Margaret Jenkins, which I would hope we would in some way, how do we do that with others? So, that's the context, and the particular here because of the incredible amount of hours that Margaret Jenkins students have contributed to making our park a better place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'll, Mr. Herman, speak to it.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. In addition to comments by Mayor Jensen, the work that the school has done at Trafalgar Park has been tremendous. They've really transformed the look there, and certainly this report is not so much about whether that should be recognized, it's as we started to think about other community groups, and some that do a large amount of work, some that do a Saturday morning once a year to clean up the beach and what have you, and just trying to get a handle on who do we recognize, when do we recognize them, what type of criteria do we put in place there in the absence currently of any type of policy? So, I actually had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Jones about this, trying to wrap our heads around how we would deal with any potential further inquiries or requests for such recognition, and felt that the best thing to do would be to try and draft a policy for council's perusal and discussion, but that we would maybe ask proactively for any sort of thoughts around some of the criteria that council might like to see in there prior to drafting it.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. And there's a whole list of, well, small list of questions that have been posed here for our Committee to consider. So, discussion. Councillor Murdock? Oh, sorry. Sorry, Councillor Wayth's had her hand up.
Thank you.
Ages ago.
Through you, Chair. It's, I think it's wonderful that we do have so many different organizations that give so generously of their time within our community. Obviously, it's not just Margaret Jenkins that gives of their time. There's also the Friends of Uplands Park and many, many other organizations. And so, I have a little bit of difficulty that we would recognize by putting up a sign, because in my mind, we have so many signs already in our parks and around our community. And so, I'm wondering if there's something different that we can do that would still be a form of recognition for a group that has given so many hours of their volunteer time, but in a way that doesn't put another sign out in the community. You know, perhaps around the table, there's some other ideas of how we might do that, but that would be my preference, is not to put an actual sign out in the community, but to recognize in some other way.
Councillor Murdock, then, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, through you, Chair. I feel the same way. I think that signs in the parks can get very cluttered and very worn out, and have to have maintenance and all the other pieces to it. I think recognizing is an excellent idea. My thinking on this one was just doing basically an annual certificate, so if a group organizes an X threshold of hours, that we give them a certificate of recognition that they can hang, if it's at the school or whatever jurisdiction. We can provide it in electronic form, so they can share it on social media and talk about it. We can give a master list at the Rec Center if that's required. We have a number of other sort of sites that recognize people. But it would sort of simplify our task quite considerably, because we would just do it on an annual basis. We don't have to keep track of how many hours year over year. But I think it should address all, in the answer to the questions, address all groups. Yes, it should have a threshold, but that's really for the Parks, Recreation and Culture to determine. Should there be some type of commitment for future volunteering? I don't think that's necessary. If people volunteer one year, let's recognize them and move on to the next year. So, I think that's probably a reasonable compromise, and if the bodies think that, I just think, kind of maintain signs and determining that threshold is going to be quite difficult.
Thank you, Councillor Murdock. Mr. Mayor?
There should be some kind of recognition. There's a number of questions here about who they should apply to, and I think the wider we cast the net, I think the better it is. We show appreciation for the efforts of groups such as scouts, or guides, or school groups. I wouldn't restrict it, and I wouldn't necessarily restrict it to anything other than inconsequential they volunteering. So, if someone, they spend all day, I mean, that's not inconsequential. Where the sign should be, I suppose, is something that maybe needs to be determined. I think small signs of recognition in a park, I don't think would detract from the park. And if we're not to go down that way, maybe signs that actually can be put up in the school itself with a year on them, recognizing in 2018 the efforts, for instance, of Margaret Jenkins, they would get a plaque or something that they could resurrect, or not erect, I guess, in whatever area, public area they have. But it is essentially telling parents, telling others that use that school, or others that use that park, if we decide to go down that road, that these efforts of the, of these volunteers is greatly appreciated, and is very important. I think Mr. Herman mentioned, and I heard the same thing from Mr. Hyde Lay, that the impact of Margaret Jenkins' efforts, over 2,000 hours, has been very significant and very noticeable. So, if anything, we shouldn't limit who we recognize, and I guess it's a toss-up of where, if you can come up with nice little signs that are in the park, I think that would be preferable. But in the meantime, at the very least, we should send something to each of these schools or scout groups or what have you. Thank you.
Councillor Murdock? Yeah, Councillors, and then you. I thought he said first. Yeah, he had his. Oh, Councillor.
I presume you mean Councillor Zelka. Thank you very much. So, I like what I'm hearing around the table. I'm uncomfortable with more signs going up in the park. I tend to agree with my fellow Councillors and the Mayor. If there's an existing sign, say, some sort of a thing at Catapult or in the Uplands, then maybe on the back of that sign, in something that won't actually provide long-term maintenance cost, possibly, that could be an appropriate place to put something small, but I would actually lean much more towards providing a certificate, electronic or otherwise, for the local organization to put up in their facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zelka, Councillor Croft, and then Councillor Brayfaw.
Thank you, Chair. Well, actually, I think that there is recognition already at Trafalgar Park for Rotary, both, because Rotary about 20 years ago spent quite a bit of money, along with the municipality, in developing the current configuration of Trafalgar Park. So, I believe there's a cairn up there that could probably handle a nice little plaque if somebody wanted to go to that route to put a plaque on that cairn. But I also think there should go to, because then it's not a new installation, we already have something up there. The other thing is, I think that it's actually twofold. I think there should be something in the school, that there's a picture of the work and recognizing the work that the children have done on the park, so that it's permanent in the school, and kids in the future can see that, because they may not get up to the park to actually see the sign up on the cairn. So, I like where this is going. I don't want a bunch of signs, but I think for specific recognition, I agree, Parks Recreation and Culture can establish the criteria.
Okay, Councillor Brayfaw, and then we'll ask the public if they want to speak to the item.
Thank you so much, Chair. So, I would agree that some sort of certificate could go to the schools. I think that we already have, within the Parks, Recreation and Culture main building, we have a plaque of recognitions of, I think, residents who are over 90 years old or something, who still actively use the facility. And my thought would be to have something similar to that, as to volunteers who have given of their time and energy within the community, and that could be the schools or whatever group it might happen to be. And then, again, we're not cluttering up the parks with more signs that take a little bit more extra maintenance, et cetera, because they're outside. So, that would be, I think, something that we could take to Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission, and we could have a discussion and perhaps draw up some rules and regulations around that.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Surprisingly, Mr. Herman had a really good idea, and what he's proposing to do, actually, is to actually put a sign together that can be posted in the school, and if at some point, council decided to develop a policy to actually put things in particular areas, you know, you see things on roads and cared for by X, Y, Z, that that could be moved, but in the shorter term, the school itself could have a sign recognizing the important impact that they've had on the park. So, sorry, Mr. Herman.
So, let's turn to the public. Does anybody want to weigh in here on this item? Okay, so let's come back to the Committee. I'll just weigh in my two bits. It's so important that we do take the time to recognize and celebrate the work that our volunteers do, and I like the way the Committee's going here on where to put them. I don't think in the park is a good place to, it's sort of hard to imagine where the endpoint to that might be. So, let's just see if there's any further discussion, or somebody wants to put the motion forward. Councillor Kirby?
I would make the motion that I guess we recommend, or send this to the Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission to come up with a particular design or signage that would be, signage of recognition that would be given to those volunteers that work in our parks.
Second.
And if I could make a comment, I just wanted to emphasize that, that I think this is particularly important, because they are youth, and young people need to be recognized, especially, we have the Young Exceptional Star Awards for that particular reason, to celebrate the achievements of youth, and for, in this case, where they're working in our parks and contributing immensely to the natural environment, but also learning tons while they do it. I think that's about how to protect the park. It's my kids that have taught me how to protect Uplands Park, and I think that's a very valuable lesson, intergenerational connection, is when you go to visit the park, that's how I learned about Daphne. It's because my son was able to teach me how to identify it. So, I think this is a wonderful program, and so, anything we can do to encourage them to come back and get them started young, working in the park is excellent, because they'll continue to do so. We know that kids who volunteer continue to volunteer. So, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thanks, Councillor Kirby. So, if there's no further discussion, we've got a motion, a secondor, going to call the question. All in favor, opposed, non-opposed? Okay, thank you. So, let's move on to, thank you, Mr. Herman. Now, we have an interesting bylaw amendment before us here, and item four, and I'm going to ask Chief Cockle to speak to the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What we've put before you for consideration is an amendment to the Parks and Beach bylaw to address portable barbecues, to address the propane campfires, portable campfires that you can use now, and other innovative propane technology that is safe for people to use and would still be safe in the environment along the beaches. As council spoke to us several times over the past couple of years, you know, can we make amendments to having beach fires and so on and so forth in certain areas? Staff took this back. We did some research internally, and we feel that this is a nice compromise to move forward with, and would like to put this recommendation forward for consideration.
Thank you, Chief Cockle. So, let's just see if there's any questions before we ask the public to speak. Okay, so let's just go up here. So, Councillor Murdock, and then, it looks like everybody, okay. One at a time here.
Well, this is very simple. First of all, thank you for bringing this forward. I was kind of sad last time, we didn't move forward with a trial of a beach fire, so this seems like a reasonable compromise to try out. My questions really are just around the rationale of the hours, and particularly of the, which I understand is the final version of that, is 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And the second one is just why May 1st through September 30th. I would think if there's a warm evening any time of the year, it would make no difference to the enforcement for this bylaw.
You're correct, through the Chair. The reason that we considered May to September is because that's the busiest times of the year, that we have people on the beaches and so forth, and so we thought that that would be a good trial period. But there is no underlying index here that would say that we shouldn't go for the whole year. It's more than happy to look at that type of change. With regards to the hours, typically, by 10 o'clock, everybody's gone home who's a family, and at that point, the beach changes to different people. So, we chose to kind of put things at around the 9 o'clock, as far as shutting the fire down and starting to move the family home, and then moving forward. And please, don't take that wrong in the fact that, you know, our beaches turn into this wild party land, because they certainly do not. They're patrolled very well, but there's definitely a different group after 10, so.
Second question I have is just, this does apply to all, it looks like the bylaw is written, that it applies to all beaches in Oak Bay.
Correct, it would be all the four shores, so from the high water mark down to the low water mark.
Thank you very much.
Was that Councillor Croft? Was that Counselor Croft? Did you have, no? Okay. Okay, Counselor Braithwaite? No, we don't need to do that.
Tough crowd. I'm not really sure how to take the being on the beach after 11 because I'm often on the beach after 11, so I'm not really sure about that, however, but not making fires. I would reiterate some of the things that Counselor Murdock has said. I would like to see this extended at least until 10 o'clock and all year round. I think that the thought of being able to take my little fire pit down to the beach and have a fire and roast some marshmallows in front of the ocean is a fabulous thing. And so I'm very supportive of this and I would just like to see it extended. So, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Kirby?
I'm very pleased to see this come as well because it's exciting to be able to have an opportunity to have a fire on the beach, but not to impact people's, well, people with asthma that are impacted by smoke and the other, obviously, the impacts on the environment. Again, I learned that there's little critters in the sand. It's all part of the big ecosystem and that the beach fires do impact that. So I, this is awesome. I'm very excited. I've just, I read, when I read the bylaw, I thought it said that it would only be around the picnic area, so not on the beach. Am I misunderstanding that?
It would be all the foreshore area, but in Willows, it would actually include the picnic benches and stuff. There used to be barbecue pits down at the beach through the chair, sorry. And those were removed a few years ago because of our sand fleas and so forth. And so this gives an opportunity, like, just so council's aware, we do have people come down and they set up their barbecues and stuff on the picnic tables. And the last thing we want to do, because it's not legal, is say, you know what, you need to go home because you can't do this here. And so that's why we address that specifically here because the picnic areas and especially those ones down there because they're concrete are perfect for that type of activity, so.
Okay, and just one follow-up, Chair. I also think, I mean, this is, I know there's a different crowd that can stay late after dark, but there's nothing nicer than staying after dark with a fire. Like, that's sort of, to me, the whole point, that you stay when the sun goes down, as soon as the sun goes down in Victoria, it's freezing. And I'm from the Kootenays, so it's not like that. You know, you could stay out till three o'clock in the morning and you'd still be fine. But not that I would do that because I'm a responsible family type anyways, just kidding. I think it's also an amazing experience for young people to be able to be out on the beach. And they may not be up to trouble. They might actually be just out enjoying the evening and staying warm around a fire. And that's quite a unifying, community-building experience to sit around a fire with your friends at the beach and maybe not getting into trouble. I mean, I think they do that anyways. I think we know that that happens anyways. Those beach fires have happened in the past, but if they were organized enough to bring down a propane fire, I think there's probably a bit of responsibility that's going to be involved. Because if you have a propane fire, you're not going to want to wreck that because you've got to bring it home to mom and dad because it's expensive. And so there's going to be some responsibility hopefully shown there. But, and I think they're safe. So I'd like to see it extended if the hours were to after dark. And whether that's 10, 10:30, 11, all year round, according to Counselor Braithwaite. I don't see, I don't have any objection to that for a trial period. If it doesn't work out, if there is, if there are real safety concerns, environmental concerns, okay, let's learn from that and we'll peel back. But I think it's worth a try.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Zelka, did you have a question? Yeah, oh, sorry, is that in response to Counselor Kirby, Mr. Jones?
I'm afraid it is, sorry. So one of the things that is important from an enforcement perspective is to have a clear delineation of when you can start and when you have to stop. And, you know, from a staff perspective, we would, you know what, if everything worked well over the next year and this was not an issue, then I think you could look at that. But we as enforcement, the fire department, the police department, need to have a time. And that, I know that can be hard, but, you know, you can't say, well, when it's dark or that type of thing. There needs to be a time. And so we are thinking that let's try this out, see how it works. And if everything goes great, then we can look at modifying in the future.
Mr. Jones, Counselor Kirby?
Just to clarify, I didn't mean any time. I just was saying whatever council agrees to. I'm amenable to, but I don't care what the time is. I just think it should be after dark. And I think in the summer evenings, that's as late as 10 o'clock, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you, Chief Cockle, for bringing this forward. I very much appreciate the suggestions. And I definitely want to support staff. I actually like the hours that are being proposed. Try a 9:00 p.m. and see how it works, maybe give it a year or two and see how responsible our public is down by the water. And if we want to extend it, extend it. But I do worry that if we extend it at the nighttime, then all the folks who currently can't have an open flame in their backyard may want to have that as well. So I just, I would just worry about extending it into the dark hours. A question through you to one of the staff members is, please define for me the foreshore. I see on Willows Beach, it's extended to picnic tables, but everywhere else is defined as the foreshore. Is that really just the high watermark?
So within the bylaw, the foreshore is identified as the high watermark to the low watermark. That's the beach area. And the reason that that's significant here is because we don't want people up into people's properties on the back of the beach areas. This is to have them on the sand on the bottom piece, so.
So a question then, just a hypothetical question, say, for example, Cattle Point, where, you know, you drive in, there's that wonderful little area, and then you sort of step down, I guess, from the parking area where it's all rocky. Is that considered foreshore?
So below where the high tide comes in on that, so on Cattle Point, there would be only that little, there's a little half crescent piece of sand in the hole there and whatever the rock face is out into the, out into the, into the water on the low tides, that would be it. It wouldn't be anywhere up onto the grass or the park area.
Thank you. And a follow-up, if I may? So I presume with the approval of this, there'll be some sort of a sign or at least something in the newspaper to let people know that that's going on. That's number one. And number two, the bylaw makes reference that during tea party, it's not, we don't want the fires to be happening, but also at times that you or the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture choose it to be inappropriate. I presume that we would have to do signage for those sorts of things. If you could just talk to that, please.
Through the chair, certainly it is our intention that we would do notification as we do through the fire service, through oakbay.ca and so forth. Hearing the previous pieces, there wouldn't be any posting unless we were into an extreme fire hazard, at which time certainly the fire chief has full control of shutting down parks and open fires at any given time. But again, the intent of this is, and the significance of what we're trying to do here is, if we're down on the beach and we're not up into the grassy areas and so forth in a controlled fire, we shouldn't have to shut those down in the extreme pieces. And again, it'll depend on how we make out with our fire season here, so.
So let's turn to, do you have a question or is it a comment? It's a question. Okay, okay. Counselor Croft?
Thank you to you, Chair. I do have a, I'd like you to comment about the use of charcoal. From my experience in the background, I've seen people bury their coals in the sand and little kids have stepped on them. I've seen people put them in garbage cans and created fires. And it creates a whole nother issue of having charcoal at the beach. And I'm hoping that we could consider having no charcoal and just stick with the other appliances that you're recommending, the propane and the gas.
Through the chair. Yeah, the reason that we've put charcoal in there and, you know, you have these cowboy briquettes now, which basically you heat up the same thing in an approved appliance. You're correct, unless they're disposed of correctly, that they do create a hazard. We believe that there won't be that many people that use this equipment in the beach areas. There certainly isn't now. But it is a hazard and we're not opposed to not having charcoal if that's the committee's decision. Ultimately, like we said when we brought this forward tonight, is for committee to have a look at this, see what they think needs to be fine-tuned. And we're willing to take this forward and try, put it on a trial basis for a year. Certainly, there's a policing and fire background in this because we tend to deal with this throughout the year. And we think this is a, to speak frankly, the good people that we have that go to the beach that, you know, just sit and have a beach fire, will do this and will enjoy it and will have no problem with that. You know, when we have the individuals that come down and are there for a specific reason, they're still going to come for a specific reason. We know that. And we'll manage that as we do through the bylaw. So I don't think there's going to be large changes. There'll probably be some changes in that, you know, some kids are just going to come down. I'm sorry, it shouldn't be kids, but you know what I'm saying? Some of the older adults as well will be coming down and, you know, I have to agree. I mean, there's nothing nicer in, you know, in December or in October when you've got that big full moon coming up over the strait that you'd like to sit on the beach and just have a quick fire and go home, you know, because you get cold early then. So that's the intent of what we have here. We're certainly open to any suggestions that come from committee for us to make a recommended change prior to taking it to readings. We're happy to do that. With Mr. Jones, we do need a time, though, and that's why we put this forth.
Okay, I have one question to Chief Cockle. In terms of the fueling of the outdoor appliances, does it preclude using wood?
Yes, it would because that would burn directly, so there's no wood here. It would be, it would be natural gas or propane. Those, the devices that we've put forth here, they say right on the packages that you're not to use wood with or any burning materials with them, so, all right.
Counselor Kirby?
Just to clarify, that's the same rules that apply to the backyard appliances, right? Yeah, thanks.
Okay, let's go to the public and see if anybody would like to weigh in. Okay, come on up and we know who you are, but put your name down on the sheet there.
So Tim Daddy, I live at 2793 So Mass. Do I have to sign right now? Yeah, there we go. That's right. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll be really brief because I, I mean, I had trouble giving up an hour tonight, so you guys giving up all this time. In one word, charcoal. I understand the intent of the bylaw and I support it. We love seeing the beach used. I live down near the beach. The time, I think, for a trial period of nine is good and one of many in the neighborhood that are constantly cleaning up garbage. And Oak Bay does not. If I can be a little critical, help a lot with that. But that's not my main concern. My main concern is charcoal, having lived near there for 20 years and watching people come down. The foreshore is not clear-cut, so a number of properties, what appears to be public property is not. And in my case, we've left it very natural. There's lots of logs and seagrass that is in fact, if you survey above the high watermark, and would be very vulnerable to fire because it's dry, dry, dry. And we intentionally keep it as natural as possible. It's a very sensitive marine and bird environment south of Willows Beach in that rock area. I mean, it's another issue, the dogs chasing the birds and whatnot, but that is a highly sensitive area. Bird watchers there all the time. And so I appreciate when owners leave the foreshore very natural, but it's not clear to members of the public where that starts and stops. Also, there's little pockets, if you walk down there, there's little pockets of sand tucked in around the rocks where people take, the kids take their shoes off and they play because there's not a lot of sand in those areas and they go in and out and in and out. So I'm very concerned about the charcoal. Not only do I believe we shouldn't be burning the fumes of charcoal and if you look at, I was an amateur scientist and did some Googling and there's pretty noxious fumes coming from that. But it's also not an affordability issue, these little devices that you can take to the beach are more and more affordable at Canadian Tire all over the place. So I thought, is it an affordability issue? It's not. So I just think that it's great that you're doing it, great that you're looking at and we'll review it in a year, but just delete charcoal. I think it's as dangerous as wood personally. And certainly for feet and for areas where the foreshore is unclear, it's not all like Willows Beach where there's sand, 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 sand. So, and people do use the beaches elsewhere. So that's, thank you very much.
Very much, Mr. Teddy. Is there anybody else? Yeah, come on up, Mr. Sultan.
James Sultan, 1009 Monterey Avenue. Through Chair, I just would like to express support to Counselor Braithwaite and Kirby. I would like to say that I'd like to see the hours extended, probably to 11:00 p.m. I think it's not reasonable just to think about eight o'clock or nine o'clock based on the bad crowd, so to speak. I think the bad crowd is the exception, so to speak, and it can be enforced. I think we should think about the good crowd and I'd like to be able to stay until 11:00. And a younger crowd should be able to stay until 11:00. I'm concerned about cleaning. And this is a question through you, Chair. Does the bylaw have, has any provision in regards to cleaning? And how is cleaning up the beach enforced? I don't know what the question is.
If you want to answer to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This would not be any different than any other type of activity that occurs in a park or on public property if there were damage or litter. And of course, it's difficult. If we were able to determine who were the cause of that, then we would certainly look to recover those costs.
Okay, thank you. I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you. If there's nobody else, yeah, come on up, yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair and counselors and staff for an opportunity to speak on this item. My name is Gordon Alexander. I live on Bowker Place. It is on the foreshore. And in fact, interestingly, we own the foreshore, that is, to the high watermark. I applaud council for its efforts to develop broad policy that in fact would maximize public access and public use of public resources. And I think this is an excellent idea. However, I don't have to tell you how hard it is to craft language that achieves those purposes. The goods are easy. The, you know, the desirables are easy. Structure and implementation is the true challenge, and I don't think that this bylaw yet is finished. The, I have a number of observations. The first one is, I'm not sure why it should apply to all of the foreshore of Oak Bay. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it applies to all the public parks of Oak Bay. And it would seem to me that this policy, if it's a good policy, should apply to all the public parks. And then it seems to me that it is legitimately the council's role to control that land or to influence that land. And so I would, I would suggest that that matter be considered more carefully or more fully. Perhaps it has not been at all. I think that the question about the definition of the bylaw, restricting the fires to foreshore, is a fatal flaw. That really means below high tide mark. Good luck, sir. Well, no, the tide comes, no, it doesn't. It comes, oh, no, it doesn't. It's not there now, but yesterday. It's not there now, but yesterday. I think it's fatal. Ninety percent of Willow's Beach and the Esplanade is above high tide. Where you play volleyball is above high tide. I think it's fatal. I encourage the committee to instruct better language because it's not even the intent of the committee, as I understand it, to restrict it to the intertidal zone. The language is, but that's not the intent, I don't believe. I think the bylaw might use further work as well because it waffles around as to appliances, heaters, cooking, and other things, and I'm not sure that that's really been thought of. I think that you alluded, sir, to the notion that there are increasing numbers of devices and you're trying to be facilitating, and I would agree with that. The heaters, the lamps, the Coleman lamps that have been updated, you can imagine a whole range of potential things coming forward, and I would include, suggest that be expanded or looked at more carefully and more completely, more clearly. The inclusion of the word charcoal is problematic in the extreme. I could tell a story which actually relates to a fire because you remember, actually, most of us are of an age when briquettes were being used, and you remember that they are slow to light, and you always want to barbecue the steak at 6:30 or 7:00, but the darn stuff isn't ready. So you barbecue it anyways and then you go inside and you let that barbecue briquette get hot, and it really gets hot around nine o'clock, an hour and a half after you wanted it. And one of my good friends on Pembroke Avenue lived to forget the day because the barbecue went up the side of the back of their house, burned all the family heirlooms on the inside of that house, and, you know, several tens of thousands later, they realized that briquettes are not the best thing for barbecuing. I think the council should use its own knowledge of its own personal behavior with briquettes to realize that it should be stricken from the draft and removed completely. It poses waste problems, danger problems, we can predict. Who would possibly recommend or allow using a product that is inherently dangerous in the disposal of that same product? It's just, I think you, as a group, need to rethink that one very, very carefully. Nonetheless, I think it's kind of exciting and I'm going to enjoy seeing a new group of people come along and enjoy the beach just as we do, but there is a little work to be done, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public who'd like to speak to this issue? Okay, we've got some good feedback here and let's bring it back to the committee for further discussion and looking for Mr. Mayor, a motion.
No, it's really a question to, to staff. Mr. Alexander, quite apart from the briquettes, the one which I agree with him on, raised some, some, some issues there in terms of the definition of the foreshore. Did you look at other approaches to how you would define where these are? That's number one. And number two, you also raised the issue of applying a policy to all of the parks. Is that something that was looked at and what was the thinking by staff on that? Thank you.
And through the Chair. So the definition we used for foreshore is the one that's actually in the Parks and Beach bylaw that was the original bylaw that we have, and that identifies where the foreshore is, and ultimately, this is designed for below the high tide mark. That's what this is designed for. This was specific to beaches. We did not look other than at Willow's to extend it into our parks at this time. That may be something that we do in the future as we move forward, but at this point, it was specifically around our beach areas and our foreshore areas.
To follow up, so the definition has existed in the bylaw, I hear you say. Has it become, has it ever been an enforcement issue about where the foreshore is? In other words, are there, are there instances where you've gotten, you have to draw a line in the sand, so to speak, where you've said, no, you're in the wrong spot? Had you been over here 10 feet, you'd be okay, or below there, you wouldn't be okay?
Through, through the Chair. This is an issue we deal with every day in enforcement with regards to this, depending on where the tide water is. If the tide is up and the kids want to have a beach fire, then they put it wherever they can, and normally that's on someone's private property. And we normally find that out through the homeowner when we get there as to where they are and as the kids scramble away. So there isn't, I completely agree, there isn't a defined line, but what we chose to use was the actual definitions that we currently had and worked with to date. And we work with the residents continuing on this. One of the key pieces of this is we don't want to get back into the 80s and 90s that we had where, you know, lawn furniture and everything was going into a pile and getting burned up. That's, that's not what this is all about, right? This is about the opportunity for people to go and enjoy our beachfront.
So Kirby.
I just was going to suggest a motion that we approve the, sorry, I'm going to read what we have, the recommendation. The recommendation in the report supports council goal, I can't find the actual motion, but there is no motion, so I guess I'll just make my own motion. Okay, no, I see that the committee of the whole recommend council give three readings to Parks and Beaches bylaw amendment by law, 471 to 2018, but that it be amended before we do that to extend to 10:00 PM and that we remove charcoal.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second or so, discussion.
I might just motivate slightly. I, I completely support the, the removal of charcoal because, not just because of, I hadn't even thought about the idea that it carries on burning. I have to admit that I don't think I've ever used charcoal, being that it's gone out of fashion, but it's, it's, it's also, I think, really smelly. I think there's a very strong odor, if I, if I remember back in the day that, but if you could confirm that, that would be helpful. Is there, is there, isn't there fumes that come off of that? What is it made of?
It's made of carbon particulates that they compress together and then the piece that smells is when they use lighter fluid or something along those lines to get it going, but there's other options now for, for them to get them going, but ultimately it is open flame.
Great, thank you. I think that's a recipe for disaster. I'm just going to reinforce that and motivate that we, yeah, that, yeah, anything that includes lighter fluid, bad idea.
Counselor Braithwaite.
I would be supportive of that amendment to the, to the bylaw, but I would like to see it extended to a longer period of time rather than just from May to September. So if there's any consideration of that around the table.
So you've got a motion, but you had some conditions, so do you want to make a friendly amendment or?
I could, I could amend it to a year-long thing. I think this, the effort was, or the, the intent was, if I'm interpreting the report right, that it was just an attempt to make some small change to see how it goes and pilot this. But I think, given that we're a fairly smart bunch of people, we will, we will make those changes if they're necessary and we can, we can quickly change the bylaw and create more firm restrictions. We can pull this back if it doesn't work.
Okay, so we've got a mover and a second as a friendly amendment, so is there any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, Counselor Crofton, then Counselor Zelka.
Isn't it, this is just you, Chair, this is an opportunity to try something new. I think we should hang in with the months that we've been given here. Those are the warmer summer months, May 1st to September 30th. You know, all of a sudden you get into October 31st, you're getting into Halloween and, you know, I think you're inviting things that you really don't want to get into, so I, I can't support this friendly amendment.
Counselor Zelka.
I just wanted, I guess, a point of procedure. I don't understand, I thought friendly amendments were outlawed when a staff sort of clarified things for us, and this, I understand, is not a change to the original motion, it is an amendment to the motion that was put forward. I just want to clarify, is that what we're, what we're discussing?
Go to staff for some clarification.
Sorry, Madam Chair, and I apologize for my perhaps analogy here. So you have a bylaw in front of you and the appropriate action would be to give a certain number of readings, and it might be first and second reading, and then if there were changes to that, then you would make amendments, so you would, there would be a motion perhaps to give first and second reading to bylaw, whatever the number is, I can't even remember. And then there'd be a further motion to amend the bylaw to increase the hour to 10:00 PM and eliminate charcoal or whatever else the committee may choose to do.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Okay, so let's go back. Okay, so could you advise us how to get out of this little bit of quagmire we got ourselves into?
So, so just to be clear for everybody, so tonight, this is a committee of the whole meeting, and this committee will be making a recommendation to council. So, yeah, I apologize, I didn't do that very well. So tonight would be appropriate to say, you know, that bylaw X be amended to, to say 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM or whatever number you want and eliminate charcoal and that bylaw be brought forward to council for consideration of, usually it would be three readings, so.
Right, so it's a...
Just, just want to make, just to be sure, so, you know, so you've considered the bylaw, so this could all be done in one motion if it were the will of the committee to, you know, eliminate charcoal in section 21.1A and to increase the hours to 10:00 PM or whatever you might choose to do.
So one, okay, and we should do that now before we send it to council?
Correct.
Make the amendment now.
So we, we would bring forward the, the bylaw that...
Right. Okay. The only issue here, we've got some issues on the table around the sea, was trying to, and that wasn't in Counselor Kirby's motion, so.
So, and, and I think that the, it's true that at that time, at the end of summer, we can come back and revisit that and extend that if we choose to, so I'm happy to leave it the way it is.
Okay, let's leave that. Counselor Zelka.
Thank you, Chair. If, while I'm in general support what we're trying to do here, I question through you a point of procedure. If there's a number of conditions attached to the recommendations, I would be leaning towards a division of the questions so that we can vote on them independently as opposed to one whole.
So what I understood staff to say is that, oh, I see, so you're not happy with the motion as it stands with the amendment around the charcoal and the time? Is that what you're saying, Counselor Zelka?
If there's just an opportunity, I would love to see the, the, the forward recommendations, but if we're going to attach some, some, some conditions, then instead of it being an omnibus motion, I'd rather us deal with them individually, please. A division of the question.
Okay, so is that the will? I think that's the will of the, so that's a point of procedure, or, well, so we've got a motion, okay, then what we can do, we've got a motion on the table and we've got a second. We've had some discussion, I've heard what you said, Counselor Zelka. I guess what we'll do is I'll call the question and let's see where the committee wants to go, and it may or may not address your concern, Counselor Zelka. Mr. Mayor.
Just trying to understand what Counselor Zelka's getting at. I, I think that would defeat the purpose of what he's trying to do. He's trying to, and I think my, my understanding of our procedure is a little differently, CRD. The CRD, the Chair has the power to divide a motion. Here, it has to be by motion to divide a motion. So I think it would be just a simple matter of, of dividing it between the briquettes and, and if there's a second, and the time, I think that's what I heard Counselor Zelka trying to do.
So how, I'm going to go back to staff? How do we do that, Mr. Jones? To divide the motion into two issues so that we can vote on the...
Madam Chair, my, my suggestion would be that you consider each one of these separately. It sounds like that's important, so you, you could, you could say the time and then the charcoal.
Okay. But we have a motion on the table that has them combined.
You do, correct.
We vote on that and, but if we vote it, it may go against what Counselor Zelka...
Madam Chair, you, you can certainly move forward with the motion that's on the table, absolutely.
But my question to Mr. Jones, if, if I may, if we were to address Counselor Zelka's issue around separating them because he'd like to vote on them separately, how do we get this motion off? Is there a way to move the motion off without voting on it? Because if we vote on it, we may all agree except for Counselor Zelka. Is there a way to do that? That's my question.
That really, at the end of the day, is up to the, the committee. You, you could decide to approve the resolution as it stands today, or you could, as a group, decide to, to separate those, and it's really up, up to you.
Okay, let's go to the committee. What do you want to do? Okay, let's just hear from, I, I hear, do you want to speak to it, Counselor Zelka?
Well, I certainly would like to move the motion to, to, to separate because I understand the actual live motion on the table is the one that was, got through the friendly amendment because there was a second on it. So we actually have the thing with the...
Wrong, Counselor Zelka.
But it was seconded.
Okay.
You know, the last time I tried to do a friendly amendment, I was told by our, our procedures expert that that's not allowed.
Okay, Counselor Zelka, I, I don't know if I would, why don't I check with staff? And let's just ask for some direction here.
And I thought, I was under the impression that division of the question was, was, could be called at any time. I didn't realize that there's a convention, but Robert's Rules of War basically says that, that, that there's no problem just dividing the question.
Okay. Counselor Zelka, I'm trying to figure out how to do that, okay, to address your concerns, but I'm going to see where we are on the current motion, given the, what we, what we did, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So council could choose if it, if it so wishes, and, and most of the times, these things done, are done on kind of a friendly amendment, a process, but not always. And so when we come into a situation where there's different points of view, then there should be a consideration by the committee. So if there is a motion to separate, then that would be appropriate and that should be voted upon, yes or no, by the committee. So in this particular situation, Counselor Zelka, as I understand it, would like to have the, the two proposed amendments separated, but the motion right now is not to do that, it's to do them both. So that is really up to the committee, so my, my, my sense is, is Counselor Zelka wants to move that motion.
Go ahead, Counselor Zelka.
Thank you, Chair. Now that I am aware that the third item, which I am opposed to, has been withdrawn, I wasn't aware that we were able to do that without voting, especially after something's been seconded, I'm fine to withdraw the division of the question because it was the third item that I had a problem with.
Okay, I got it. Okay, so thank you very much for that clarification. So shall, is there's no more discussion, no further discussion? I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, good.
Madam Chair, I just want, for the benefit of the, the viewing audience, so we will, we will be coming forward with a bylaw that is not exactly how it's listed on the agenda tonight, and that will come forward to council and reflect the fact that there will be, charcoal will be out of that and the time will change.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Thank you very much, Chief Cockle, for bringing this forward to us and it's party time on the beach. No. I didn't mean that. So let's move along here. So, let's move along here because I think many of you are here to have your land use applications reviewed by the committee. So we have five applications under the land use section and each of these have been brought through the advisory bodies for review and comment. To begin with, there's four development variance permit applications and for the benefit of the people visiting is that if the committee determines they are ready to proceed to council, resolutions with respect to notification will come forward at the May 28th council meeting and they will be finally considered by council on June 25th. Okay, so, item number five, we have a development variance permit on 3,000 Valdez and this is an application to construct a new family dwelling with an outdoor pool and a variance for the distance between the building and the structures is required. So I'm going to ask Ms. Jensen if she'll speak to the application.
Thank you, Chair. You are correct. This, this application is twofold. There is an application for Uplands Siting and Design Approval for construction of a new home to replace the existing home on the site. The other portion of the application is for a development variance permit and that is for one variance for separation between buildings and structures. So the new home, the proposed design is intended to reflect the park-like setting of the site. It is using materials such as cedar, stucco, and stone to blend in with the landscape. The new home is set back from the street. It is located partly on the footprint of the existing home and meets all other setback requirements for lot lines. The variance requested is specifically for the distance between the proposed home and the swimming pool. The application was reviewed by the Advisory Design Panel at their April 3 meeting. The panel did recommend some changes to the design, specifically recommending a reduction in hard surfaces and using special construction techniques to minimize the impact on trees. The applicant has incorporated these suggestions into the plans. They've reduced the autocourt area, they have planted some lawn, and committed to special construction techniques to reduce damage to trees. They have also increased plantings and reduced the stone wall size along the Uplands Park side. Staff have reviewed the application with respect to site characteristics and the neighborhood. The front yard of the property is quite private on this small cul-de-sac. The design is intended to respect the park-like setting of the site as well as protect the view from Uplands Park. Steps were undertaken to reduce the impact on the trees, including those special construction techniques. There are no significant concerns with respect to house design. Staff are requesting committee direction.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jensen. So let's just start with any questions from the committee for staff. Okay, if there's, oh, Counselor Kirby.
I just had one question about the existing house and the lot coverage. I'm just wondering, what's, the, the plans don't say, they say that the new lot coverage is 25%. I'm just wondering if we have any idea what the current house covers.
I don't have a specific number for you. If you look at the first plan on the site, you can see a vague dotted outline on the left portion of the, of the proposed dwelling and that's where the existing footprint sits.
So if I'm to understand, is it, is it roughly the same size or is it about half the size of, like, my, my, I can't tell, but it looks like it's about half the size of the house that, that is being proposed? Or double, what's there? Going from about a 5,000 square foot?
Yeah, I would suggest that might be appropriate. The applicants are here, they might have some more information on the existing house.
Thank you.
So if there's no further question from the committee, I'm going to ask the applicants to come on up, write your name and pronounce your name on the mic for the benefit of the viewers on the video.
Hi there, my name is Taylor Johnson. I'm representing the area group with respect to this application. Thank you for having me here tonight.
Does the committee have any questions to the applicant?
I'm just going to repeat my question, that, I'm just wondering what the house is that's on the lot? Well, how big is it, the current house?
It's quite a bit smaller, actually. So the footprint of the proposed house is within bylaw as was mentioned, but it is quite a bit bigger than the older house that's sitting there now.
Do you know how big the current house is?
I don't, I would say that your doubling size wouldn't be too far off, but I don't have a square footage on that existing footprint.
And the new house is about 10,000 square feet?
It's 10,000 square feet under the bylaw, but if you look at how the bylaw is broken down, there's covered, covered roof area on the patio as well as some altered grade in the back so that the, the main floor of the house better addresses Uplands Park. So the, the actual footprint, well, the actual square footage of the house is about 8,800 square feet. There's 1,100 square foot of patio and pool in the, in the back that contributes to getting to that full FSR number.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Counselor Murdock? You attended the site today.
I did.
Counselor Murdock?
Yeah, and that helped because it's a, it's a large lot and a large house going on a large lot. I just, my clarification was really around the point that you made there, the, first off, I always have a hard time with variances on new builds, so my understanding of this is that that section of the house was essentially pushed back a bit to try and preserve some trees, is that, is that accurate?
That's correct. We tried as best we could to work around the existing vegetation and topography as, as much as possible, but the primary intent of this design was to get that main floor elevation up to the elevation of the park. So we're treating the park as if it was a waterfront property and, and the main floor opens up to that elevation. So if you look at the, if you can think back to your visit today and you look at the house next door, it's more of a traditional two-story with a full roof above it, but it's depressed from the park by about seven feet and our goal was to get it up and work with as much of the topography as we could. So part of that precluded having a second story above, which is why the footprint is significantly bigger, although the floor space is within the bylaw requirements.
Okay, thank you. And, and, yeah, the question I had is also just around that patio, so is this, the issue is there because you've raised it up, you have to elevate the patio and that elevation causes the issue?
Yes, you know the bylaw well enough to know that. Once you manipulate the grade a little bit, and it doesn't say that you can't excavate, it's either way. So we're raising it to try to prevent some of the excavation that's happening, potentially would, would be happening there, but also to have that walkout and so that if you're in the park, it feels more like it's addressing it rather than it's being in a hole, kind of at the edge of the park looking down on it.
Okay, and I'm just curious of what, I mean, for the benefit of those in the audience, the variance here is essentially an internal variance. It's between the pool and the, and the buildings, so it doesn't really affect anybody else. But just on principle of this, why, why not just make the house a little bit smaller so you have sort of 10 feet of gap there and, on that and provide more of a case, if it's a new site?
There's a few ways to look at it. We could also look at an alternate location for the swimming pool, which would push it towards existing vegetation. So we, we felt that the, the location for the pool was the most suitable. It prevented any existing vegetation from being removed, but the size of the house was driven more by the program and the fact that we don't have a, we don't have a traditional second story on top of it. So that's what contributed to the size of the footprint. And if you look at the variance, it's not for the whole pool, it's for actually a small section of the pool.
Okay, thank you. And I will say that the, the aspects of this that I do appreciate are, are really that lack of a second story. That, that site could be, with a bit of manipulation, have a pretty towering building that would overlook that park quite dramatically and, and really create a bit of a visual eyesore for the park, so I certainly do appreciate the efforts to keep that, that floor down.
And I wish the drawings did a better job of indicating the articulation of that park front. It's not one, one-story mass that's facing the park. There is a lot, there's, there's several pavilion elements connected by lower roofed areas, so we've got quite a bit of variation in the form and I think that will be a successful design long-term for that parkage.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you to speak into the mic more?
Oh, sorry.
Because I'm just concerned if anybody's trying to listen to you, they won't be able to hear because you have to speak right into the mic.
Of course. My apologies.
Counselor Kirby, Counselor?
I tried to get your?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Counselor Kirby. Counselor Brinkley?
Thank you, I'm through you, Chair. I have a couple of the same concerns as Counselor Murdock has, has spoken about. Number one, I, I hate having to give variances to new builds because I truly feel that a new build should be able to fit in within a, if it's a blank lot, you should be able to fit in within the variances. So I do have difficulty with that. It is a very large house. Yes, it's within the, the floor air ratio, but it's at .39 of the floor air ratio, which means that in the future, when this house sells, if somebody comes along and wants to make some minor adjustments, they'll be, they'll have their hands tied because they won't be able to make any additions or anything like that to the house. So that's a bit of a concern for me as well. I, I wonder, when you said that you would, you could move the, the swimming pool, but then you would be impacting the landscape a little bit more. I mean, when I read the Arborist Report, it looks to me like a lot of the, the trees are being impacted a lot already and especially the house next door, I believe that some of the blasting will affect some of the trees on the house next door in, in the Arborist Report. It speaks to that?
I'm sorry.
I can pull it up for you, hang on one second.
Well, I've got a copy of it here.
It says, "The driveway is to come through a rocky area that will require rock removal to achieve reasonable grades. The shape of the rock may limit the root growth in the area, although that may not be the case. Blasting on the driveway area may heavily impact the gary oaks and cedar on the boulevard and the oaks on 3020 Valdez."
Right, so when we looked at the landscape design and we have quite a prominent landscape architect working on this, the consideration was given to the canopy size as well and, and I, I think we're actually adding to the overall canopy of this, this property and I think that should be considered as, as part of this development scheme. I, I know that there is some impact to swinging that driveway through, but the trees that have been identified as, as coming out are of, and I hate saying this, of, of limited value in certain locations. And so I, I think that we are being quite sensitive. I understand that is, it's a large residence being proposed, but I think we are doing a, a successful job at dealing with the landscape and the topography.
And I, I wouldn't disagree except for the fact that it seems to me that when people say they're adding to the canopy, that's in 50 years you're adding to the canopy because it takes 50 years for those trees to get to that same growth of, of what the tree is that you're, that you're taking out over 50 to 100 years. So, so eventually you'll be adding to the canopy, but immediately, no.
Well, in fairness, we're not proposing that the trees that we're putting in are going to be the same size. It's about cumulative canopy being added to the property. So five smaller trees, if you look at it from a canopy coverage perspective, would, would impact in the same way as, as one larger tree or thereabouts.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to the, I, I realize that the, the variance that you're looking for for the swimming pool is only on one certain, certain piece of the house. Was there never any thought to just pulling that, that piece of the house back and just losing 200 square feet from a 10,600 square foot house?
To, to, and, to get to this point, we've had a lot of thoughts as to the configuration of the property and, and I mean, that is one thing that we looked at, the configuration of the bedroom wing, that's the bedroom wing over there. There's, there's four children in the house and, and the configuration is months and months of kind of going back and forth with, with design intense and, and property layout. So it was something that was looked at. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't where we got to with our final design.
And again, I, again, I would reiterate some of the comments that it's, it's a great design of a house. In my view, though, again, I, I do have a lot of difficulty approving variances on a, on a lot that is a blank lot, so I'm not sure whether I'm going to be able to support the application. I'm pretty sure everybody else around the table will have their own opinion on that and will make their own decision, but for me, right now, unless I hear otherwise, it's going to be hard for me to support that, but I do think it's a lovely design for a house and I appreciate the fact that it is only one story, so thank you for that.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, are there any further questions from the committee to the applicant? If not, I'm going to ask if there's anybody from the public, or Counselor Kirby?
Just have one more question about the view from the park. If there's one thing in my seven years on council that I regret, it's, it's, it's some, it's not being more vocal about the view from the park. Those houses that border the park, I believe, need to respect the values that were laid out more than anyone because they impact the park users and the public more than anyone. Yes, they get to enjoy a beautiful park setting, but they also are meant to contribute to that park-like setting and that, that's the goals that are set out by the, by the Special Powers Act. But, so my, my impression from the plans are that it's, yes, a one-story from, from the, from the park and it says something about screenings and fencing. And I just would like to have a better understanding of what that means. They, I've been promised in the past that screenings and fencings would, fencing would reduce the impact of a, of a structure on the park and I was very disappointed in the result, so I would like to hear more about that.
I can appreciate that. Part of the process was, if you look, and you get a lot, I know you get a lot of material for these meetings, so it's hard to go through everything, there is a streetscape drawn from the park side. It's LDP 3.01R1. No, so it's, it's in the landscape package, it's actually, I think it's the last, but in, no, there's actually a landscape version of that drawing indicating details, it's the very last page.
The, visual, the drawing with the, with the greenery?
All the way, all the, keep going.
Yeah, that's the, that's what I was showing him, the image of the park, from the park.
That's, okay, so.
There's an image from the park and then there's also a landscape plan a little bit higher up that shows the, the plantings and I see two trees beside, or three trees beside the, the pool and the garage.
So it may not be circulated as part of the package, I'm, I'm not sure. So this is, this is the drawing that was, can I, can I give you the drawing that was submitted as part of the application?
Let's just make sure that we all, like, because it's important that we all have the same materials, so maybe it's somewhere else and we just aren't seeing it.
It's page LDP 3.01R1.
Okay, just hang on.
Okay, so we have an elevation, 3.01.
Counselor Kirby, perhaps you could look at what he's trying to show you and then you could circulate it for the rest of the committee.
So there's a, there's a landscape elevation of that facade of the park, identifying fences, gates, landscape being proposed. And so what you can see is, you can see a landscaped edge, various forms from the park, but what I think is the most important to see is it's not a one, it's not a, a tall roof structure that you're seeing from the park. And in some cases, what you'll see is you'll see a two-story building with effectively a hat on top of it and all you see from the higher elevations is that face of the, the roof. And what we've tried to do is we've tried to break up the structures into peaked forms and then lower flat areas to get some articulation to go along with that facade.
I agree, it's not, it's not a wall and it's not, I'm, I, just one more question, I'm sure it's, it, it's not all, it's not all dark from my, the colors that are here are the actual colors, right? The beige and, yeah, beige and sort of brown, gray, yeah, it's not a black wall.
No, I apologize, that, that print isn't in color, so.
Yeah, okay, no, that's great, thank you. I, I appreciate that very much.
If there's no further questions from the committee, let's see if there's anybody from the public would like to speak to this application. Appears not, okay, so let's come back. Oh, yeah, come on up, sir.
Hi, it's Tom Procello. I'm the owner of the property with my wife and my family. Thanks very much for taking the time to understand what we're trying to achieve here. I think from the set, we've always viewed this lot as something very special and the reason being is that it goes onto the park, but also because of the amazing oak trees. So to, I know the house may appear to be large, but we have a very large family when you take in account that there's six people in our family, four young kids, and when you have friends over and you have in-laws over, suddenly the space is quite consuming or the, the brood is quite consuming. So the, the other point that we came into is that we really wanted to save every possible gary oak on the property. When you go through the- When you go through the history of that property, there was a previous permit, and I think that was one of the main objections on the property, was that people were removing the oaks. We saw the beauty of the oaks, so we specifically designed around the oaks, which led us to specific design. And if you start saying, "Well, let's move this," or "Let's tweak that," your choice is then, "Let's cut that oak out." And that's what they did with previous permits that were approved. So with the guidance of council and understanding the process and taking the direction, and when I say council, pardon me, the Building Department and the Director of Planning and the Advisory Design Panel, we moved forward with a plan to come here tonight. And I, I, I thank the Advisory Design Panel, and I thank the Director of Planning and the Planning Department for giving us that, and that's where we got to this point now, and their appreciation of what we are trying to achieve in saving the oaks. And in addition to that, because we believe firmly in the park setting and in just nature, which is why we've significantly enhanced the landscape through the plan and increased the tree coverage. And granted, there may be smaller trees, but one has to start somewhere. If you want just pure rock and hardscape versus tree coverage, then that's a different bylaw, a different coverage ratio, a different ratio that you guys want. So I think that's what we've tried to achieve as a family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Procello. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Braithwaite.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. And I, I, I am a big protector of the trees, so that's why I, I concentrate on those. I would just like to ask, um, staff, is, do we have an actual count on the number of oak trees that are coming down? It looks to me, when I look at the Arborist report, that it could be like six or seven?
We know for sure that there are four smaller oak trees near the detached garage that will be removed. There's other, also another two-stemmed oak tree that's near the front entry of the home. They're proposing to take one of those stems off. It's literally growing into where the house will be. We're not sure of the viability of that tree once that second stem is removed. There's another two oak trees on the far right side of the proposed house, looking at the diagram. We are hoping that those two trees can be saved by using special construction techniques.
Thank you. And just to reiterate that, obviously, we don't want a lot of hardscape, but we do have bylaws in place that do protect the trees, and that's why there is a, there's a request that you, or an actual, that, that, there's, there's something in place that you do have to replace trees that, that you take away, and that there is an expectation that you will increase the canopy, not decrease the canopy. So just to have that comment in there.
I believe, and I could be wrong in this, the coverage ratio that's stated under the current laws are 45%, and I think we're going to 65% coverage. So we're significantly increasing the coverage. And the other oak that you, was mentioned by the Manager of Planning, particularly one of them is diseased and in fact causes a problem right now in terms of safety. So irrespective of whether we build or don't build, it, the Arborist recommended it be removed from a safety perspective.
Did we ask the public yet? We did. Yeah, okay.
I, through you, Chair, I, I think that you've done quite an amazing job in this site, irrespective of the size of the house. It was a challenging site, and you were challenged, and I think you met it, and I think that was acknowledged by the Advisory Design Panel. And I'm prepared to move the staff recommendation and the notification to the public.
Okay. Mover, secondor, Counselor Zelka. Any further discussion? Counselor Braithwaite?
Again, I agree that the design of the house is fabulous. It fits in really, really well. I just wish it was a little bit smaller so we didn't have to have that variance. I will vote against it, even though I do support the house, the look of the house. I just think that it could be just taken back just a teensy bit.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. In, in general, I, I, I am loathe to approve variances on new builds. I, I, I get that. But I, on, but this, you know, difficult lot, and I appreciate the change, the, the work that was done to, especially not going to a second floor so that the impact on the actual Uplands Park was minimized, and at the same time, work to save the trees on the other side. I appreciate the effort that was made. It's fairly obvious. And as a result, I'll, in this case, I'll bend. Thank you.
Yeah, and just my, I'll weigh in here. I, I too, I mean, it's a beautiful piece of architecture. It's going to fit in there beautifully, but, and I like how you've moved it up, kept the second level off, because you could go up and that would impact the park, so I appreciate that. And the effort you've made around the trees, you're actually going to increase the, the tree cover, so the canopy there. So, and I, from what I've heard here this evening, you have made an effort to move the house to preserve as many, and you're going to add plantings. So the variance is in the inside of the property. It's not going to look any different, even if we did have you move it back, and I think it benefits the park, so I'm going to vote in favor. If there's no further questions, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. And by the way, I just got word that this will actually be seen by council, not on May 28th, but June, it will come forward to council on June 11th, not May 28th. Yep, okay. Okay, so that's one down, six to go. So we're on number six here. We've got Development Variance Permit at 3125 Uplands Road. So this is an application to construct an accessory building, an accessory structure, and to replace select windows in the single-family dwelling. This is included in the Community Heritage Register. Variants are requested for relaxation of maximum roof height and building height and minimum distance between buildings and structures and minimum front yard setback of an accessory structure. So I'm going to ask staff to provide us an overview of the application.
Similarly, with the previous application, this one is twofold. So the application is for consideration of Upland Siting and Design Approval. That would be for the existing heritage-registered home. The proposal for the home is to replace two banks of windows with stained glass windows. One of those would be on the northeast side of the home, and then an additional two stained glass panes would be inserted on each side of the door within the new front entry. That new front entry is actually not part of the original home. The owner is also proposing to construct a cabana and wall structures in the southern portion of the site. They would also like to revise the layout of the patio stairs for easier access. So because of the siting of the cabana, variances are required for setbacks, and the owners are also proposing variances to heights to better reflect the existing building. Council previously approved a similar application for a cabana building on this site. That design was never constructed. The current layout has been considered by the Advisory Design Panel, who recommended approval of the proposal, with some modifications to the cabana cladding and side window construction. Changes have been incorporated as a result of those recommendations. The Heritage Commission also considered this application with respect to the stained glass and the, the patio layout, and they were also in favor of the application. Staff have also reviewed the application. The zoning bylaw would treat this area for the proposed works as the front yard, but with a site layout for this particular site, it's actually the, the rear yard for the home. Landscaping and siting effectively direct activity away from the adjacent neighbor, and the proposed design complements the existing home. Staff are requesting committee direction.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay. Is the applicant in attendance? Okay, so you might, you can, well, let's see if there's any, come on up. Yeah, okay. Okay, and, yeah, write your names down, introduce yourselves, please. And so, no questions? No questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Kirby.
About just the wall, this, there's a, there's a wall and fence, and I'm just wondering, I don't know which side is facing the street. So I just don't know which one that is, but the, which street, street elevation doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
I, I'm, my name is Matt Howard. I'm the owner of the house.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I think that, that street is, lands downstream, so there's a, there's a fence against the heads.
Okay, okay.
And then the, the wall runs perpendicular into the fence.
Okay. Okay, I'm understanding it now. Thank you. Okay, no further question?
Okay. Any further questions from the committee? Is there anybody from the audience who'd like to speak to the application? I don't see anybody. Okay, let's come back. Is there any further discussion here? Then I'll look for a motion.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Sorry to have caused you the extra, extra effort there, but thank you. Let's move on to Land Use Application Number Seven in the agenda, and here we have a DVP for 195 Sunny Lane, and this is an application to renovate an existing single-family dwelling. Variants are requested for relaxation of roof, building, and occupiable heights and setback requirements. I'll ask staff to speak to the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This variance permit application is to facilitate interior renovations for additional living space in the unfinished upper floor of this 1912 home. The applicant proposes to expand the area by adding dormers to allow for addition, and to allow for additional paved surface in the front yard. The rear deck and side yard stairs, which are encroaching into setbacks and were built without permit, will also be reconstructed. This work does, however, require a number of variances to proceed. Height variances are requested for the additions to reflect the legal non-conforming status of the home. This is also true for the side yard setbacks. For the deck and stairs specifically on the left-hand side of the home, when you're, when you're standing in front of it, because there is limited room in the side yard, the stairs require variances to the interior side lot line. Currently, those stairs may even be encroaching into the side yard setback of the adjacent property. Both those stairs and the deck were previously constructed without permit. Staff have reviewed the application with respect to the site characteristics of the neighborhood. It is not anticipated that the works will have any impact on neighboring properties, but reconstruction of the stairs and the deck will ensure the safety of those structures and reduce that existing encroachment. There are also a number of other accessory structures on the property that were built without permit, and these will be removed as part of the renovations. No trees are being impacted, and protective fencing will be in place while construction is underway. So overall, the variances that are requested for this home, the height variances really reflect the existing home, but because there's increased volume to the home, variances to those heights are also requested. The setbacks, similarly, because the volume is increasing, those setbacks are not expanding into the side yard setbacks further than the existing home, but the volume is increasing, so those setbacks are also requested. The one area where you see the bulk of the, the addition is on the upper left-hand story of the home.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Are there any questions from the committee? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you so much, Chair. A question through you to staff. If you could speak to any intentions on the proponent for blasting and along those lines, because in this area, there, there's a lot of sort of sensitivity for some, not necessarily this development, unless there is blasting, but certainly for some other developments. And also, if you could possibly make reference or, or talk to the, the boulder wall that appears to be, is that north or to the north of it? There's, there's, that appears, it's, it's just off the property or, or in the park. Is there any impact on that boulder wall? Thank you.
There really should be minimal need for blasting on this site. The bulk of the work that's happening on this house are interior renovations. Other than that, they are redoing the, the stairs and the rear deck, but ultimately, a lot of the accessory buildings that are being removed will be removed by hand, protective fencing around the trees, so there should be minimal impact.
A follow-up, if I may. Does this house have heritage value? Is it, is it designated, or should it be possible?
This is not a designated home, and the owners have not indicated they would like to pursue that.
Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you, through you, Chair. So you, you talk about a lot of the additions and changes that were made to the house that were not done with permit, and was it, it wasn't by these people, though it was by future, or, or past owners?
Those constructions, those items have been there for a while, so I would presume there's a previous owner.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no further questions from the committee to staff, I'm going to ask, yeah?
I'm sorry, I want further questions. Do, do we know who built the house? Is it 19, 1912, isn't it? Sorry, whatever year it was. Do we know who built the house? Or maybe that's a question through to the proponent, possibly.
We have no in, information in our file as to who the architect was.
Okay, so is the applicant, thank you, is the applicant here? Okay, would you like to come up to the table, jot your name down, and announce it into the microphone, please?
I'm the designer on the project.
I'm Rachel Cleaves. I'm an owner of the house.
Tim Cleaves, co-owner.
Very much. Welcome. So, to the committee, have you any questions to the applicant? Counselor Murdock?
Just one question, and it just doesn't have any impact on the choice of the, of the variances, but I'm curious, in the, in the drawings here, that house has got very distinctive sort of rounded windows on the, on the main lower floors. Is that being continued up to the upper story as well, or is that?
We're, we're replacing the windows with windows that are similar to the windows already in the upper story. Those rounded windows were done after the fact. I mean, they're not original to the home. They're, they've been done later. I don't know when, but, yeah. We're replacing, the windows will look very much the same as the windows do now on the upper story.
Thank you, and just compliments on a very sympathetic addition onto the house.
Thank you.
Okay, any, Counselors, don't come.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, my compliments as well. I, I love what you're proposing to do with the house. Could you provide a bit of history of this building, please, if, of whatever, whatever you know?
I, I don't know anything about it.
Exactly, well. I don't, I'm not a historian of this house. I, I, I have no idea. I mean, I know it's an old house, but I think the house, my impression is that it has been through many renovations over the years, and they have been, let's say, not super coherent. So I, I suspect that the house, as it now appears, does not resemble the house that was built there in 1912. Like, I think it was, you know, something added on here, or something tacked on there.
So if no further question, I'm going to go, yeah, Counselor Kirby?
No, I was going to move the recommendation, but we need to throw to the public first.
Okay, I'm just going to, thank you. Yeah, we'll just ask if anybody from the public would like to speak to this application, and it appears that nobody would, so I'll come back to the.
I'll move the recommendation that the application to renovate and construct in addition to the single-family dwelling at 195 Sunny Lane be approved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Good, thank you very much. So this will come before, forward to council for notification, or, is it notification on June 11th, is it? Or before council for consideration? I wasn't quite clear. Do you know?
Notification will go out subsequent to this meeting, and it will come before council for final resolution on June 11th.
On June 11th, okay. Okay, thank you. So, item number eight, 2072 Neal Street. This is an application to construct a single-family home on a vacant lot. The approach, proposal is to access this lot via the driveway running across Lot 12 at 2072 Neal Street. Variants are requested for paved surface and the minimum required setbacks for the principal building. So I'm going to ask staff to provide us an overview of the application.
Thank you, Chair. This application involves two separate properties. 2072 Neal Street consists of both a property along Neal Street, where the existing home is located, and another vacant legal lot to the rear of the home. The owner is proposing to construct an approximately 2,100 square foot two-story home with basement on the smaller 3,000 square foot lot at the rear. The lot itself was part of a subdivision developed in 1998. While no access was provided as part of the subdivision, the owner would register an easement across the front parcel to provide for a second driveway. The additional paved surface in the front yard resulting from that second driveway necessitates the need for a paved surface variance for the front lot. The size of the vacant lot makes it somewhat problematic to meet the setback requirements set out in the RS5 zone, which anticipates larger parcel sizes. While the design meets the height requirements of the zone, variances are requested for side yard setbacks. Staff are expecting some impact to trees. A new driveway will require. A new driveway will require special construction techniques to protect the shallow-rooted cedar tree on the front lot. The siding of services will also require extra review to ensure no impact to that cedar tree. The large garyoaks sited on the rear lot will likely require removal due to declining health and proximity of the proposed home. The applicant would have to provide two replacement trees on the property. Staff are requesting committee direction.
Okay, questions from the committee? Mayor Jensen?
I have a series of questions through you, Chair, to Ms. Jensen. The first one was, sorry, did you say when this, I didn't quite catch you when the subdivision was made?
We know the subdivision was completed in 1998.
Completed in 1998? Okay, just, fine. It just struck me that they've been around a lot longer, but the, I wonder if you could explain the footprint on allowable? Footprint on allowable in this zone if there's a garage in the house or part of the house? Or if you separate the garage and you put it elsewhere on the property? What are the rules surrounding that, please?
Within an RS5 zone, you are entitled to 30% lot coverage. So if you have no accessory buildings, you can wrap that entire 30% into the principal home, your house. If you were looking for accessory buildings, you can have up to 7% lot coverage on your site for accessory buildings. That's then removed from the lot coverage that you can have in your house. So you could have 7% accessory buildings, 23% for your house, or some combination thereof, but no more than 7% for the accessory buildings.
All right. And I also wanted to ask you about patio homes in our, I think that's what they're called in our bylaws. What about their floor space, sorry, footprint? And what if any conditions are there on such developments?
Patio homes were incorporated into the zoning bylaw back in 2015 once the floor area review committee had completed their recommendations. So for one-story homes, patio homes, the lot coverage was changed to go up to 35%, recognizing if, you know, aging generation needed that additional space on a one-level home. So 35% if it's a one-level home. In this case, it's a two-story home, so they're restricted to 30.
So do patio homes, are they allowed basements or they have to be on slabs on the?
They would be allowed basements.
Be allowed basements. And then lastly, if there were no variances, what could be built on this property?
I would have to do the math. You'd be looking at a 1,200 square foot footprint. That's what you could have is the point four. Then we'd have to pull it in respecting those setbacks. I'm not sure what that would look like.
But what would the, if you, if they were to obey all the setbacks, is it possible to build? Within our current zoning?
It would be possible to build within the current zoning. It would be quite a small awkward footprint for a reasonable-sized home.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Braithwaite.
Just a follow-up. What is considered a reasonable-sized home? Just, I mean, I know you just said that, so is it like 3,000 square feet, 1,000 square feet? I'm just wondering what a reasonable-sized home would be.
I think that would really depend on the property owner from 800 square feet to 3,000 or 4,000 square feet. What we are seeing in terms of building footprints on what I'm going to call an average-sized lot in Oak Bay is probably ranging somewhere between 3,000 and 5,000 square feet.
Any other questions? Let's, Counselor Murdock.
Thank you, through you Chair, to the Director of Building and Planning. Just, I'm trying to get my head around, when I look at those lots tucked in behind with no access, they, it occurred to me originally, yes, to me, sort of quirks of, you know, you often get multiple lots overlapping. Our house has, you know, 14 feet of the neighbor's lot included in our official lot. That, but you said the subdivision was made in 1998. Is there any record of the logic attached to that and what the intent was of that subdivision?
No, I'm afraid we have very little information in the files other than the actual subdivision plan.
Okay.
So there's very little information I can give you with respect to what the logic was as to how those lots were created.
And the other question I have, and I'll ask this of the applicant as well, but from a professional planning perspective, the recommendation here is to consider this or to recommend it. But I am curious, it always strikes me as, we went through the floor area review process, one of the big pieces was even increasing some of the rear yard setbacks to make sure there wasn't sort of overlook. This seems as a, the face of it, a fairly large, like tall building that would overlook completely, especially with the reduced setbacks into multiple backyards. Can you just address that from a planning perspective? The logic behind, sort of allowing one building instead of in the middle of a bunch of other people's backyards?
It's really one of those interesting situations where, planning theory aside, you have a legal lot sitting there and legally we cannot sterilize that lot to say nothing can be built there. So then it becomes a question of what do you build on this site? First, you need access to the site. The owner has a proposal to move forward with that. Then how do you fit a reasonable-sized house within that site? So when we speak to the size of the property, the 2,100 square foot two-story home, that's also including the basement area. So the two stories that you have above ground is taking up 1,200 square feet of that site. When we look at the zoning bylaw and the setbacks for the house, the proposal is to vary the rear lot line, so that would be facing the rear yard of adjacent properties, to 5.21 meters, so they're really only reducing it by eight feet. The interior side lot line, which would then come up the rear lot of one property, is asking for a variance to 1.31 meters, so that's a variance of one foot. Interestingly enough, if the owner was proposing to construct a principal home and an accessory structure for their parking garage as an accessory building, that could actually come even closer than what they're proposing to do at 1.31 meters. So we're trying to take all of that into consideration as to what would be reasonable to build on a small lot that does not really meet what the, meet what the minimum parcel size is for an RS5 zone and still create a comfortable living space. We can also take into consideration the fact that those rear yards, while not wanting to create any negative impacts on those rear yards, they are substantial-sized yards, so there still is a fair bit of distance between the proposed house and the houses on the adjacent lots.
My other questions are really probably more around other, when I look at this, I just, I see, you know, generous lots like this tend to, you know, in more of a planned model, you would probably be ideal places with things like duplexes or other places that sort of keep the continuity of the, you know, just using the two lots as one contiguous. This seems very much like a squeezing it in, but that's probably too big a question for this discussion, so I'll leave that, I'll leave that one for now, thanks.
Braithwaite.
Just to follow up on something that you said, Ms. Jensen. You said that if there was a garage, if it was treated as one house with a garage in the back and/or an accessory building in the back, that it would actually be closer, it would be 1.37 meters to the lot line. But if it was a garage, then it would be one story, most likely, and it would be uninhabitable, or it wouldn't be able to be lived in by anyone. So it is a little bit different, even though it's a little bit closer, would you not say, than having a full house there?
That is correct. You would not have the two-story, you wouldn't necessarily have the same overlook. You would have a building that would be substantially closer to the lot line.
Counselors.
Thank you Chair. So I get the impression that we're kind of following the new procedures to some extent for the Advisory Planning Commission possibly? Because I see that one of the options is option two, which is that the application be referred. I have a feeling in the past that this would have just gone straight to advisory planning because it's a bit unusual. I just wanted to ask about that first, and then I have a follow-up question.
That is correct. Based on the discussions that were had with the Advisory Planning Commission and with council, we are looking as to which applications would come straight to committee of the whole and which would go through to the Advisory Planning Commission. We were intending to use this particular application as a test case with the Advisory Planning Commission as to whether they would want to review it or whether it would come directly to committee of the whole. Unfortunately, we were short of one meeting, so, you know, in deference to the applicant, we wanted to get council feedback.
If I may continue? So, thank you. I appreciate council having a chance to see this, certainly, I guess, on early view. I certainly would be supportive of this going to Advisory Planning Commission and at the appropriate time I'll be moving option two. Since I would also love to get an opinion from the APC with respect to the applicability of duplexing, with respect to the ability of how we could possibly find a way to save the trees, minimize the paving, not, you know, allow the owner of the property to possibly develop it. Maybe it's suitable for a small garden suite versus something else. But I would definitely love to have the opinion of the Advisory Planning Commission to maybe chime in on some of those questions that are floating around here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braithwaite.
Yeah, just one, give me the quick question in regards to some of the different numbers that I saw on what the plans say and what staff had in their report. I believe the plans say, and I know it's only going to be like three feet, however, in this particular case, three feet makes a big difference. The plans say 3,091.79 feet. And on the staff report, it says 3,089 feet. And I'm wondering which one is correct?
Yeah, I mean, we would potentially, we would be going with the square meter, so there may have been, just flipping the numbers for the square feet. It would be the 287 square meters.
If there's no further questions, is the applicant in the audience? Yeah, do you want to, I've got a few, there may be some questions in this instance. Okay, come on up and jot your names down and, for the record, speak into the mic with your names.
Russ Collins. And Rick Humphries.
Ricky? Is that Ricky?
Yeah, yes.
He used to go out with her. Little Ricky, okay.
Long time ago.
Sorry, welcome. So, are there any questions from the committee to the applicant? No.
Yes, yeah.
I'll start it, since there's going to be some shyingness here in asking questions. I guess I would just, it just started off really with the broadest of questions. I, it's an unusual application in the sense that it's a back-and-forth development. It's a lot that's in many ways much smaller than the RS5 lot zoning was intended to carry, which is a minimum lot size, I think around 6,000 square feet. We're at a bit closer to three. But I'm just trying to get my head around this a little bit. There's a lot of variances being asked for here. If you could just maybe just paint a little bit of a story so we understand the logic behind this application and why it's coming forward to us in this form?
Yeah. Yeah, so I currently live at 2072 Neal Street. In the front house, it's a 1930s house with my wife and two kids. It's a two-bedroom, one-bathroom house. And we have, since purchasing it, have had another child and we are outgrowing it. So we've decided with the help of Russ to try to build a house on the legal rear lot, which would properly house our family. One of the criteria with the design was to create three bedrooms upstairs. That was a big thing for me and my family, so that my wife could be in one room and our two children could be in the other two rooms. And so, you know, we've done, we've gone back and forth with a lot of different designs alterations. And that was kind of the goal behind the design of the house.
Counselor, was it Counselor Kirby, do you have a question?
Yeah, that creates more questions for me. So then your intention is to sell the front house and move into the house in the backyard?
I'm not too sure what, so I want to keep the front house. That was kind of the idea behind the access going around down the side of the house.
Right.
You know, if, if, there could be a chance where if this, you know, if it doesn't go through, do we sell it in the far future? And, you know, someone could potentially knock down the 1930s house. So our idea was we wanted to keep the 1930s house. It's current housing stock and we love the character of the house. But to build on the legal lot behind.
Okay. Just a follow-up question then. Did you consider a basement? Because I feel like the, the, I mean, I support densification. I, this is the goal, we have to, we have to achieve more people living in this community to support the growth in the region. And Oak Bay has to do its part, certainly. But I just, I'm, you know, when we're plunking something into, which I think probably comes as a surprise to the neighbors, that when you have like an existing lot in the backyard like that, I'm sure not everybody was aware of that surveying, that, you know, with, hadn't, they weren't fully, and they also probably didn't anticipate it ever being built on. But when you're putting in a new house and you have the opportunity to build whatever it is that you're going to build, my first inclination would be to build within the same sort of height as the rest of the buildings around you. And to have this in the backyard, adjacent to other homes, at two stories, seems like it's going to be a hard sell to the neighbors. And what might be an easier sell would be to have the basements in the basement. And I have my basement bedroom and it's quite pleasant. And I think when we started out, I always wanted to have that three bedrooms up. I think that's what everybody looks for. It's when you're, when you're having, have a young family or you're starting to look for a home, you look for the three bedrooms up. That was, that was my, it's the way all my friends looked. And yet, in retrospect, I see the value in a basement bedroom. It's cooler, it's for temperatures, for, just for the whole family. It's just quieter down there in the basement. So if you'd consider putting the basements, or the bedrooms in the basement, it might be, have less impact on the neighbors and you might be quite pleased with the result.
Yeah, do you mean in the current house basement?
No, in your new house. If you're, if you're building a new house with two stories in the backyard, suddenly looking down on single-story or story and a half houses that exist there, I think all the houses in that neighborhood are about the same age and same era as mine, which is 1940-something. They're all, they're all small, I agree. But the height of the general neighborhood is about a story, a story and a half. And so if you suddenly come in and put this house in the middle of the backyard, overlooking all the other neighbors at two stories, and at two stories probably with a modern construction, which is usually nine to 10, sorry, nine or 10 feet high, not the eight-foot of the old-school 40s houses, it just, it just might be a little bit more imposing. So I would feel a lot better about this application if I saw it at a single-story.
Yeah, I guess just to, just to note, it's a, the footprint of the main floor is approximately 600 square feet from my calculations. So you have, if you think about a main floor of 600 square feet, that's a very small footprint. So that's going to house your, some main-level living, kitchen, dining room, and maybe a small bathroom. So I guess what we're losing, if we were to do something like that, is we would lose the basement. We would lose an extra room for an office for myself if we were to do just a main-level living and then the bedrooms in the basement? Is that, sorry?
Well, I'm just, I saw a crawl space. There's, there is no basement.
So that's, that's in the existing houses, there's a crawl space?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I saw basement-level crawl space and I was like, well, why aren't they building a basement?
The current house has, it's- The current house has, it's two-bedroom, one-bathroom on the main, and then the basement is five, nine crawl space, and then there's a garage, which is six.
Okay, I'm sorry, I mislooked at the plans, yeah. Sorry, so the new house does have a basement, but you're using it for other purposes?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor Brayfley?
Sure, thank you, through you, so in actual fact, the house is actually 1,830 square feet, because it's 610, 610, 610.
I think so, and then the garage, yeah.
And the garage, which is 200 square feet. Okay, so, I have a lot of the same concerns as Counselor Kirby. When I look at the, well, first I'm gonna ask a question to staff, is there any other area in Oak Bay that has a lot this size that we have allowed building on?
I'm going to say approximately three years ago, council approved variances for two lots at Victoria and Beaverbrook that were about the same size, maybe a little bit larger.
And those were next to each other, were they not?
Next to each other.
Next to each other, and so they were able to have the variances between them rather than on, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But other than that, we have no others?
No, if I may, actually, you do have quite a few around. There was another one that you considered a year or two ago up on King George Terrace, an existing legal lot, it was a long skinny narrow lot that was very difficult to build on between two larger homes, and council approved variances for that one as well.
Yeah, yeah, but I think that fit in better with the landscape around there, so. So, when I look at this particular area, and I understand that it is a legal lot, but by my calculations, it's about 50 by 61 feet, correct? So, as we've said, it's about 3,090 square feet. And to put a two-story house on something like that, if I look at all of the other lots, I think there's five other lots in that area, six other lots in that area, if every single one of those houses did that, then all of a sudden, which they could, if you, if you had the go-ahead to go with this, then I'm quite sure that other people would say, well, why, why wouldn't I do the same thing? Then you're gonna have six houses that are this far apart because you're five feet from the property line, so they're gonna be five feet from the property line, so it's gonna be very, very close on all sides. So, that to me is a bit of an issue, and so I would wonder why you would not consider, as Counselor Kirby had suggested, just having a one-story, putting something under one-story there, and perhaps doing something to the main house for your family, and then having that more as what the mayor was mentioning, as a patio house, which is a one-level for a senior or somebody who had mobility issues to live on, so just if you can address that.
Yeah, there is, there's actually, if you go five houses to the west of us, back in, I think it was 1998-ish, there was two houses that were built, the exact same situation, where there was two legal lots on the rear of houses, and in 98, council approved for the same laneway easement access down the side of the house, to create access to these two legal lots for the two rear houses. So, it has been done before, and I, actually Russ was, I think Russ helped out with that, that design of those houses down the street.
That's 2040 and 2042? So, they look like they're a little bit bigger lots as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that makes a little bit more sense. I, you know, I hear what you're saying, I look at my lot, my lot is 50 by 115, so it's 5,750 square feet. My house is 850 square feet on a lot that size, and I consider it, you know, a fair-sized house on that lot, and people around me have much, much bigger houses. I would, I would really like to see something more of a one-story on this particular, I think that, I'm not sure if you've actually talked to the neighbors or not, if you've had any input from the neighbors, because normally, when you're looking at doing something like this, and I know Mr. Collins, you know, this is what we normally say, is how much buy-in do you have from the neighbors? And to get buy-in from the neighbors before you get to this table is often a great thing, and, because if you have support from the neighbors, it's much easier for us to give support as well, because when I look at this and I think of how, as you said, Counselor Kirby, how imposing that is for the other houses around, I have a little bit of difficulty with it, so just if you can answer, if you've had consultation with the neighbors?
Yeah, so just, just to go back to your first point there with regards to the size of the house, the reason being is for, you know, we're not a, I'm not a single or, we're not a retired couple, we are a young family with two small boys, so needing, needing more space. I felt like the design of this house was the bare minimum for the four of us to, you know, have space and not be tripping over each other. And then, yeah, to go to your point about with neighbors, you know, this is the first time I've done this, so, you know, I have spoken to a few neighbors, and, you know, I have had support from some neighbors. You know, from the sounds of it, there are a few neighbors that are behind the lot, which unfortunately I haven't had a chance to meet because their, their properties are, they touch my property at the back, and their houses are quite far away, and I haven't had a chance to actually meet them, but for, yeah, so, I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Thank you.
Counselor Crowe?
Through you, Chair. You know, I, I know that there are a number of other small houses that we've granted variances to, and to build houses on, on similar small lots, so I actually have less concern about the variance requested for the house, it's the streetscape that bothers me in that we're gonna have two driveway crossings, and if everybody else on the street were to follow your lead, we would have a street now of driveways going down the street, and one of the things we have in our OCP is a concern for maintaining the streets. So, I find that this proposal, and Rick, you and I know that we chatted about this when I was a realtor some time ago, and we talked about doing what the neighbor did down the road, purchasing a piece of property from your neighbor so that you could have one driveway going to the back, and your neighbor chose to, in the future, they could then develop their lot at the back. So, in, the houses behind are quite a ways away, they're up a slope, I think they'll actually be overlooking this house. There may be one house that is impacted, and that's the one that's on Henderson, that backs onto this small lot more so than anybody else, but I, I do have real concern about moving forward with a driveway access in this manner.
Could I speak to that for a sec? Just, we actually originally planned on only having one driveway and having both houses access parking on the, at the rear, but that would have a huge effect on the potential to save the cedar tree in the backyard, because then we'd have to provide covered parking and an uncovered parking spot for the front house, and the driveway access to the back house. So, after consideration, we decided to ask for the variance because it already has a garage, it already has a driveway, so we don't have to provide any more parking for that existing house, but we need a small variance for paved area in the front yard, and I think it's, we felt it was more important to try to save the cedar tree.
Yeah, as well as it kind of, for the front house, the garage would have to be built in the backyard of the front house, so we felt also that by doing so, it would take away from the backyard space of the front house by having a garage in that backyard.
Counselor Crowe?
So, staff, what are our procedures for two driveway crossings in a neighborhood that the lot is, you know, these lots aren't particularly wide?
There is actually a separate clause in the driveway access bylaw for these situations, so the existing house is entitled to their one driveway access. The second driveway access is actually not considered part of that front lot. The, the bylaw does allow for a second driveway to a rear lot or to a lot that doesn't have immediate access, so long as there is an easement or some mechanism in place prior to approval of that second access.
Thank you.
Okay, other, Counselors, all come.
Thank you very much, Chair. I guess first a question through you to staff. I couldn't find it in the zoning bylaw, but do we currently have a valid duplex-type zoning in the zoning bylaw, or in some of our other bylaws, please?
You have an RD1 zoning in the bylaw. To date, we have one site that's, that has that zoning on it.
Thank you. Related to RD1, what is the minimum lot size? If I recall correctly, it's in the 7,000 square foot range, seven and a half thousand?
I, I would have to go and locate, it's a larger lot.
Certainly larger than the standard RS5, but probably smaller than an RS4, something in that range. So, thank you, I appreciate that, RD1. So, my question then through you to the proponent, Chair, is have you considered, or if not, why didn't you consider possibly amalgamating the two lots and possibly doing the duplex? Since, I believe, and I could be wrong, that the combined lot might actually work for the legal RD1 zoning.
I mean, that would require rezoning, I'm assuming. I'm assuming, yeah, correct. Sorry, can you repeat that again, sorry?
So, I just, had you considered combining the two lots into one and then proceeding with a duplexing? In other words, there would still be two, two families living on the combined property, so the aims could be achieved, and yet it would provide so much more flexibility, not only for yourself, but also for the trees and, and, you know, some of the concerns, also for the neighbors?
No, I haven't considered that. I think that would entail removing the current 1930's house, and our hope was to retain it.
Okay, are there any other questions to the, my Counselor Kirby?
Just one last question, I just, I'm looking at the streetscape and wondering what, how tall the, the rear house would be, will you be able to see the roof of it? Like, if you're looking from the street, would you be able to see the roof line of the new house from the street? Would it block the trees that are back there? Would it be like this little house peeking out from behind the, the old house?
I think only if you were looking down the driveway, and depending on where you were standing, obviously the further back you could get, the more potential you might see it, but standing in front of the house that's there now, you wouldn't be able to see the house and behind it.
Okay, so from the other side of the street, sort of the streetscape view, I wouldn't be able to see this build from, from the back, or from the front?
I'd have to go, like, the other two houses that we talked about that are a couple, a few doors down, I'd have to go down there and have a look at it, see what you can see, but they're, they're very hard to see from the street.
I mean, yeah, there's a, the large cedar that we were hoping to retain is very large, and it provides a lot of protection, so if you were to look down the left side of my front house, or the right side, I'm not too sure if you would, again, or if you're standing on the street and looking over the house, the front house, I think the cedar would block the house.
Because the cedar is between the new, the old house and the new build. Okay, I see. So, it's far, quite far back. Sorry. Okay, thank you, and I'm just wondering about the plum trees that are on the neighboring property that are along the fence line. I think the Arborist report says that it, they would be impacted by construction and would have to be removed, and I'm wondering how, have you spoken with your neighbors and are they amenable to that?
Yeah, no, not yet, haven't spoken to the neighbors about those two plums. The two plums was, it was recent information that just came to me over the last few days, but with looking, with, I had to actually walk back there and look at the plums, I didn't realize there was even plums that were coming from, from my neighbor's property onto my property. So, when looking at it, there is a, there is two smaller plums that are, the, it starts off in my neighbor's property and comes actually into my property, so you can see the fence is actually, there's a hole in the current wire fence. There was probably about 15-ish small little plum, plum trees, there's a couple in the back that are a little bit more mature, and in, but in the back, there was all these little small, really skinny plum trees all around, so my thought was over there, it, it used to be a little bit more overgrown back there, it was a rental for a long time, so my thought was that these little plums just spread it up kind of everywhere. I don't think they were intentionally planted by anyone to be planted on one property and to kind of go into the other property completely. So, no, but that's certainly something that I'm, I'm happy to talk with a neighbor about, especially, you know, whether planting, trying to save the plum tree and moving them slightly so that they stay on, on their property, or replanting some other ones, yeah, whatever's needed, definitely.
Counselor Brayfley?
Sorry, Counselor Kirby has brought up something that I, when I was looking at the pictures, and it was in regards to would the house be visible from behind the house that's currently there? So, I'm looking at DVP05, which shows a picture of the house, and there's a very large tree behind it, and a large tree to the left of it, okay? Do you see those ones I'm speaking of? Yeah, so then if I go to DVP4, and I look at the house and it shows those two trees, would that be a good rendition of the size of those trees in comparison to the size of the house?
These trees that are around here?
Yes. Because it, well, it's, you can see where.
They're not, they're not demonstrating the height of the.
Of the trees that are currently there. Okay, that was my question, because if they are, then I would say that you could see the house behind.
A lot, yeah, a lot, the cedar that you can see above the chimney.
Yeah.
A lot higher than, in my opinion, the house would be, and same with that, the skinnier branches coming up, or is that okay?
Okay, I just, I had to ask because sometimes when you put that, the trees in, you do put them to scale, so it's, it's a fair question.
The one in front, though, this is just kind of demonstrating some trees in the backyard.
Okay. Okay, so the house would be approximately the house, this height of the chimney then, on the main house? Ish? Ish is good with me, thanks.
Okay, let's see, if there's no further question, I'm gonna ask the public if there's anybody like to come speak to this application, we've got a, okay? Hang, just hang, just one sec?
Just one quick technical question, what is the total combined depth of the two lots together? Unfortunately, this, the scan that we got here, it's just not quite resolution enough to see it.
Yeah, I believe the front lot's 120 feet, and the rear lot is about 61 and a change.
Sure, thank you.
So, about 100, yeah, 180.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Murda?
The other one, they can go, just the staff, what would be the, the rear yard setback requirement if that was a single lot? Is 25 feet or the lesser of, is it 20%?
13.7 meters.
Okay, so, let's see, why don't you just take your turns and one come up at a time, or if you're in a pair, that's fine, too.
Good evening, everyone.
Write your name down and.
I will.
Thank you, and then.
State your name. Can't do two things at once. My name's Catherine Holt, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. I'm the owner of 2928 Henderson, and this is my daughter, Sana, who is taking a new and keen interest in municipal politics. So, I appreciate the comments that have been made around the table, and I do feel like that I'm gonna be a bit of redundant, because I appreciate that you've raised a lot of the issues that I have, but I do want to just say them to get them on the record from my own perspective. So, I've been an Oak Bay resident for 25 years, and in this location for five. From my backyard, I do look directly at Lot 23, so if you continued my lot, it becomes Lot 23, so there's like a direct continuation and a kind of complete overlap between my back line of my property and the side of 23. So, I do, I do love my backyard, it's a primary reason I brought the house, it looks into a large green space that is created by all of the adjoining backyards along Neal and Westdown, and I think if you've been back there, it's quite a unique green space that's been created by having no lane or other, you know, buildings, other minor buildings in that area. So, very quiet, has lots of bird life, a number of mature. So, very quiet, has lots of bird life, uh, a number of mature Gary Oaks going along those small lots behind those houses, and it's a beautiful and private area, as I was thinking today, private enough to walk around in your pajamas. So, which I have never done. I have checked on three occasions with the staff at Oak Bay to assure myself that Lot twenty-three could not be built on. First, when I was deciding whether or not to buy twenty-nine, twenty-eight Henderson, I did look at the plans and saw that it was a separate lot, so I had a very detailed conversation at the counter here with the staff person who pointed out all of the challenges that you have raised with that lot, and said that, uh, he could never imagine that lot being built on, that he didn't think it was a risk, and that I, that wasn't something I should really concern myself with. So, I went ahead and bought the house. So, then, the, uh, the, uh, twen, the, uh, listing came out for twenty-seventy-two, about three years ago, I think, and it was advertised as a laneway lot, uh, a lot, a lot with a laneway lot at the back. So again, I came to Oak Bay staff and I said, um, I'm concerned that this is being advertised as a separate laneway lot, and can it be built on? And so the staff took out the plans and said, "Do you see a laneway?" And I said, "No, no laneway lot." And reiterated some of the challenges again with access and building on such a small piece of, uh, property with no road frontage. So then, third time, so, at that point, I was actually asking, because I thought if it's, if it's an active consideration, this could become a laneway lot, or whatever you wanna call it, something to build on, I could max out the R S P investment and, um, buy the thing, uh, in order to protect this, uh, green space at the back. So, I didn't do that with the assurance of the staff. The third time it came up was when, uh, Rick did start going around to neighbors, um, other than me, I just heard about this May sixth officially from Rick when he did hand over the plans, but there has been talk going on in the neighborhood for a, a year or so. So he had approached Lucy, uh, who is my neighbor, and, um, was asking for her support for a build, so that was the third time I went to see the staff at Oak Bay, and, uh, that time it was actually an email exchange, not, uh, an in-person visit, and it was Roy Thompson that I exchanged notes with, and I included those in, uh, my letter, I believe, and he did say, of course, up to council to pass a variance, but there's many variances, it would be very challenging, and that, um, he would be very surprised if such a thing could happen. So, again, because that was a year, year and a half ago, so I thought the whole thing, that Rick had probably heard the same information and realized it was a challenge and not proceeded. So, all of that, and yet, here we are tonight. So, my concerns are the invasion of privacy I will have with a house built so close to my property line at the back and directly aligned with the back of my house, so it is what we will look at from any point in our backyard, including our deck. My second concern is, of course, the impact on the property value of going from this beautiful green space to a twenty-seven foot side of a house and a six-foot fence, which is proposed to go all the way around the lot. Right now, all the fences are, um, I have a wire fence that's about waist height, and then on the other side of twenty-three, there's a picket fence, so it's very open, like, there's not any big fencing in that area either. And of course, my most important concern, as I mentioned, is the diminishment of the beauty of the area with the removal of all trees on that Lot twenty-three, including the magnificent Gary Oak that dominates the lot. The new house will be in the middle of this unique green space, and, um, that, there's a bunch of mature Gary Oaks in those adjoining lots, as I mentioned before, so there's the precedent of what happens to all of them, not just this one. So, you know, Rick's talked about keeping the cedar, which screens his house from the new house and is on his lot, but he is planning to remove every single tree on Lot twenty-three. So, I do appreciate the comments that were made with regard to other variance applications about not favoring variances on new builds, because, uh, the specific request I'm making of council, to council of the whole, committee of the whole, gotta get the lingo right, committee of the whole tonight, is to reject the application due to the high number of variances required. The lot size has already been talked about, I know that's not a variance issue, but I think it's a strange thing for Oak Bay to have created a lot half the size of the minimum requirement in this zoning, when the bylaw is clear that a lot, a viable lot, is twice the size of this one, and would have resolved this issue. It doesn't have road access, as discussed, and the front lot would have to be forty-four percent paved in order to create that driveway. The house has to be closer to all four sides of the property to exist in its current form. It's a variance front, back, and both sides. And also, we haven't talked about the fact that he's also asking for a variance, so the top floor is of equal size to the bottom floor. The bylaw asks for an indentation of the, of the top floor, no, that's not the architectural term, setback, um, for the top floor, and, uh, this is a request to have the top and the bottom the same size, which does exacerbate the overlook issues that were mentioned, and the imposing size of that, uh, uh, design on that lot. Again, I have already mentioned the, uh, request to remove all the trees, including the protected species, the Gary Oak, which is a dominant in the, in the view from that, from all of the, the surrounding, uh, lots. And, so consequently, every aspect of the project requires a variance, and I would say by definition, that makes it not a viable proposal. So, that's my, those are my comments. Uh, I know there's a bunch of other neighbors that want to speak, I just want to say, and I don't know what your protocol is for this, but Joyce, who lives on the far side, twenty-sixty-four Neal, is in the hospital. She has Gail and, and Kevin Burr acting as power of attorney, and they asked me to express that they are also supportive of the, uh, request to reject the application on her behalf. They couldn't make it tonight, here tonight, because they're looking after her. So, any questions for me, or move on to the next person? Okay. Do you wanna say anything, Seth? Okay. As usual.
Thank you very much, Ms. Holt. Okay, so, got somebody else? Welcome, same protocol.
Good evening, thank you. My name is, uh, Steve Martin, and this is my wife, Drew Thompson, and we live at two-nine, three-nine West Down Road, which directly overlooks this lot. So, um, I mean, I've been a resident in Oak Bay for thirty-one years, and, um, we've lived at our current residence now for thirteen years. So as I said, from our backyard, we look directly into Lot twenty-three. Our back property line adjoins it. So from our property, Lot twenty-three is by far the most visible portion of all of our sightlines, and that's sightlines from our deck, from our patio, our backyard, and our family room. So, just the way the house is situated on the slope, just to give you, um, flavor for that. Our privacy and sightlines are one of the reasons that we bought the house in the first place. We enjoy our backyard immensely, and have invested over the years to make it a very special place. It's extremely private, and we enjoy and appreciate the green space, and the large Gary Oak on Lot twenty-three, and we appreciate all of that every single day and all four seasons. If we had known Lot twenty-three was buildable, we would not have bought and invested in our property in the first place. The green spa, the green space and the tree canopy, um, as has been discussed, would be replaced with a large home that would completely eliminate all of the privacy that we currently enjoy. This would not only impact the life, um, the quality of life that we enjoy as residents, but it would significantly impact the value of our property. Similar to our neighbors at two-nine, two-eight Henderson, that also adjoined Lot twenty-three, we were under the impression that it was ill-suited for development, which has been backed up by municipal officials over the years. There's absolutely no doubt that our property value would be significantly impacted by having a disproportionately tall twenty-seven foot house that is, I think, um, has been recognized, that's completely not in keeping with the one-story bungalow, um, development that, that is our neighborhood. A couple of things I want to specifically talk about, the first one is variances, and the second one is precedent. Numerous intrusive variances for this new build are required, so the house could be built to meet the minimum size requirements. But there are no real apparent reasons to grant variances. There's no rock outcroppings, there's no stream. It's been discussed earlier that it, it needs to be an appropriate size, but I think appropriate size needs to be taken, um, in context to the size of the lot. It's a micro lot, so I guess if there was any development, it should be a micro home. So, variances, uh, as has been mentioned, but I wanted to get it on the record that we're concerned about it, would allow the house to be closer to all four sides of the very small lot. They would, the variances would essentially allow the entire lot to be cleared of all of the green space, including the protected species, which is the Gary Oak. And I did note that previous people that came before this committee earlier kind of went to great pains to protect the Gary Oaks, and, and I kind of felt very heartened by that. Precedent. This is much bigger than just that one lot. The whole area would be put at risk if construction was approved on Lot twenty-three. An entire green belt that extends to the lots immediately to the west would be lost to development. So, the proposal as stands, with all the variances, would set a direct precedent for all of those other lots. Okay, so that's variance and, uh, and precedents. Now, um, just a, a couple of comments in terms of Oak Bay residents and the community plan. As Oak Bay resident, uh, as Oak Bay residents, my wife and I are very proud of the community plan, we actually have a community plan, that's awesome, so thank you all for putting that in place. And we're particularly attached to the goals related to natural environment, um, which is all about protecting and enhancing the natural features that make the community a, uh, a wonderful place to live, and, um, respect the various ecosystems, habitats, like, and tree canopies. Neighborhoods is one of the other goals. Sustain the character of Oak Bay's neighborhoods that contribute to a sense of place and attachment to the community. Developments like this that are, um, ill-suited don't support the attachment to the community. If anything, a lot of us are just gonna sell, or maybe just get so fed up and then request for a laneway and develop the backyards of our very large properties with two-story houses. Broad policies have also helped, have been established to operationalize the goals of the community plan, and in that context, infill is specifically called out. Infill, the, the broad policies talk about the consideration for increases in density while respecting the values that make Oak Bay an attractive and environmentally rich community, and while respecting and conserving neighborhood character. And infill, it goes on to define infill, and I'm not gonna, um, go on about the definition of infill, but it, it backs up what, uh, um, what I just said. So, we recognize that there's a delicate balance between change and the desire to preserve the features that define Oak Bay. And I know as elected officials and, uh, and staff that, um, that you have a tough job to do, um, in representing this unique municipality, but I trust that you'll see that this development doesn't meet the test of balance, nor does it align with the community plan and the values that we all share as residents of Oak Bay. So, um, thank you for your consideration of our concerns and our specific request to reject the application due to the number and significance magnitude of the variances required. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think there's other people that might want to have a say.
Thank you very, is there anybody, uh, from the committee that has questions, Mr. Thompson? Okay, let's, um, move, thank you very much. And is there anybody else there who, okay?
Sign in first. I'm sure, I'm closer. Is this fine? Good. My name is Sylvia Bradley, and I live at twenty-thirty-one, so the edge of my lot, um, actually borders the lot in question, and I go right the way along, along five houses of these small lots. They were called lane lots, I believe. I've lived in this house for forty-seven years, so I'm a long-time Oak Bay resident, taught in the schools here, and all my children went to school here. I love Oak Bay. I'm a very keen gardener, and I do everything I can to make my lot beautiful, but I will never make it as beautiful as the wild Gary Oaks that are on some of these lots right behind my lot. I'm a keen birder, too, and I attract birds to my house, but the quality and the number that come to my feeder are nothing compared to the variety of birds that are in those tall Gary Oaks that are behind me. It's amazing, the variety of birds that are there, in both winter and summer, and I wish that I had had the time, because this was a very sudden thing that sort of came about, and I didn't have the information. I would have gone to the birding community to get them to come and register the birds that I see there, because I have a view that's like this. Gary Oaks, some of the ones at the front are trees that I planted. I guess my main concern with this whole thing, the small lots, were because there used to be, and this is from people who were pretty old when I moved onto the street, a lane going from Henderson to Fall Bay Road. And in fact, one of the houses, in fact, two of the houses, my next-door neighbors actually had a garage that backed onto that lane, and the one on the corner, their garage was so that you could go from the lane and around and into the middle of their house, because they had lane access. Now, I don't know how come that got to be taken away. I would have loved it, if only to get to the grocery store quickly. But the fact is, it's now these small lots, and they are very small, attached to the houses on Neal. When I first looked at the house that I'm now living in and have been there for a long, long time, I did come to the then Oak Bay city and say, I, I asked them, "Why all those small lots?" And I was told, "Because if not, that lane area..." And I was told, because if not, that lane area would have been added to the back of your property and to the back of the house next door to me. And therefore, they were divided in small lots and added to the Neal Street houses. Now, I haven't got written records of this, never thought it was important to have, but that is why there seems to be this number of very small lots with no access. Because the access should have been Henderson and Fowl Bay, but that's no longer there. What I'm really worried about, obviously, is precedence. If, in fact, this lot was approved, which is the smallest of the lots, then I could see the others would go to right behind me. And if they did the same thing, I would be looking at a wall of houses. And they would be very close together. The other thing is, and really, I find it quite upsetting. I do love the trees. We built our deck so that I could sit and look at that canopy of trees. And it adds such a quality to the neighborhood. It's a wonderful green space and pockets like this you'll never find again. Once tampered with, they're gone, and that would be that. I did teach at Willows, I'll admit to that. And I used to do a whole load of the PE there, because I'm a runner and I taught volleyball, basketball. I had Gareth Reese in a class and I had quite a few of the notable basketball players. And we used to go for runs along the sidewalks. And all the children used to say, what are those large trees over there? And I said, they're Gary oaks, and they're at the back of my property. And the children saw something quite awe-inspiring even then, because of course, they are hundreds of years old now, and they are healthy. Now, a point in question I'd like answered. Further along, two houses were built. I was never notified, but part of my property was involved, but I was never consulted. Otherwise, something would have been said. Any rate, there is Gary oak there too. And they had to spend a lot of money to guarantee the health of that one. They had to shrink the house. And they had to have some of the boughs, I don't know what it is, wired together so that if there were, you know, ever should be a problem, a bough wouldn't fall in the garden of the house. So I am wondering, with all the due care and attention that's been given to that one Gary oak, why it wouldn't happen on this lot? And this Gary oak is far healthier than the other one. And all the others behind me, because they've been left alone, are just awe-inspiring. And I'd like to invite anyone from city council to come stand in my backyard. And I have to go on tiptoe, but you could see over the fence and look at those trees. It really is quite special. There's also quite a few small mammals there. We used to get deer over there quite a bit, but I think the residents have perhaps made sure that they don't come in or something. But it was quite interesting, because they knew that property and they would come to a corner of my property. And I never understood why they were always in that corner. I'm out in my garden looking quite a lot, and as I've retired, I'm there all the time. And it appears that part of the Boca Creek comes down beside my house down West Down. It splits. One part, very nicely, goes underneath my vegetable garden, which actually is part of the bit that would overlook that lot. And the other part goes along my lawn and off the corner into that area. The deer knew. And they would come and dig around and I guess get a pool of water or something. But one of the houses that was built very close to that asked me, or told me, that my pond was leaking. There was only one problem with that. I do not have a pond. I have several self-contained fountains. And they had to have a sump pump put in the house permanently, because Boca Creek goes underneath it. And I find that amazing, that a house would have been put there. Because it used to be just that part. It went into an open field area, which I remember very well, as do my children. Any rate, thank you for listening to me. I hope you will really consider how these small lots came to be and what the effects will be if you allow that development to go ahead.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bradley. Does anybody in the committee have questions for her? Nope. Okay, so thank you very much.
You are welcome to come and look.
Yeah, and thank you. Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, I'm Denise Helm. I live beside Sylvia. I'm at 2930 West Down Road. I'm mindful of the time and the fact that several people here have very well articulated what the concerns are of the neighbors. I just have to say that I'm in one of the houses where it got developed behind, which is 2040 and 2042. And, you know, it always seemed like a bit of anomaly, because here are these houses that are right on the property line that look over into our backyard. And I always thought at the time, I was big concerned to hear the staff say, well, we don't know the logic of the council at the time, why it is that these very small lots were allowed back there. So just from someone who does now presently live, and we bought our house afterwards, so we knew that there are these houses right behind us. And echoing what Sylvia said about a Gary oak, if you want to see a Gary oak that's in much worse condition, I was very surprised to hear that the Gary oak on this proposed development was considered a disease, because the one that's strung up and has got dead branches beside our house, which I consider to be a liability, they're working hard to keep alive and keep in place. But anyways, just wanted to say, as someone who's living with that experience, for all the values and well-articulated reasons, I'm also opposed to this development going forward as proposed.
Thank you. To save time, the next, oh, there's two of you there. Yeah, I was gonna try and encourage.
We're up here.
Yeah, I got, I see that, okay.
So I'm Hunter Gordon and my wife Connie Gordon, and we live at 2919 Henderson. So we're on the other side of Henderson, at the corner of Neal and Henderson. So there are a couple of things, there are a lot of here I've crossed off, because they've already been addressed, and I don't want to repeat myself. But one is, just to, I guess, reinforce the comment earlier, that with the proposal, 44% of the front yard of the house on Neal would be paved. The other is, I guess, somewhat the chain reaction, you know, if this one is approved and it's the smallest lot, there are, I guess, two or maybe three, three others in between that are slightly larger and presumably those who have homes on Neal Street in front of those may want to do the same thing. So if you can think of the streetscape, if you had a whole row of quite tall, thin houses behind, you'd be looking at, with each with a driveway that was going up the side of the house on Neal Street, I think it would certainly spoil the current streetscape. One thing that hasn't been talked about, and I don't know whether it's something that is looked at by the planning people and they are recommending this, but it strikes me that it might be somewhat difficult for fire services getting in behind something where there's a very narrow driveway running along, between the house and the lot, the east lot line. I don't know what the width would be as it goes by the house, but just my looking as I walk by, seeing where the boundary is between the 2072 and the one to its east, it doesn't look like there's gonna be much, I don't know what the width is. It does seem to me, if there's something to be built on it, a patio house or patio home seems to be the kind of thing that would be more appropriate. And the setbacks, I think, that are in the zoning, really didn't contemplate such a small lot. It may be the same zoning, but I don't think that there was much thought given to the setbacks for something such a small lot. A term was used earlier, a comfortable living space. It seems to me that this is not what anybody would describe as a comfortable living space. The last thing I wanted to talk about, which has been talked about a lot, is the Gary oaks. I don't know how many of you sort of can visualize what the neighborhood is, but the, that block between Henderson and Fowl Bay has the only groves of Gary oak. There's quite a few of them and they're quite thick and everything around the whole area has no Gary oaks, with, I guess, the exception of we have one on the corner of our, on Henderson and Neal. But it is a miniature, really, of what you see north of Lansdowne, Woodburn and Wessex and up that way, where you see a lot of, I mean, it really is quite dramatic, and that's what it looks like along that one block, the one stretch between Henderson and Neal. Anything you think I should say?
No. I think everybody covered, I want to say something. Stay there. I would just like to say that I'm totally opposed to this new build, possible new build. And not because I'm opposed to someone having a lot and has the right to build, it's looking at what has been presented. It looks like all these variances that have been requested are for the purpose of getting a house in that small little lot. The other thing, I'm also opposed to seeing that Gary oak go. We live on Henderson and Neal, we can see the top of that Gary oak, it's beautiful. For the lady on West Down, it's her pride and joy. I'm not convinced that that oak is sick. I think it wants to be, it will be taken out if there is sewer, water. How do you refer to that as? Utilities, services. And it's an inconvenience. Well, excuse me, but they're protected. And I don't think they should be taken out without due cause. So I'm opposed to this, the way it's being presented right now, as a neighbor, that's not really directly affected by it. But I live in the neighborhood, it's my neighborhood. Okay, I think we're done.
Thank you. Okay, I think I saw, yeah, come on up.
Should I move that we extend the meeting to 11?
My second.
Thank you. I guess we have to vote, discussion on call question, all in favor, opposed? No, okay, good. Oh, what time are we going to? Yeah, we're gonna extend this meeting till 11 o'clock and then we're all going home. Okay. Yeah, yes, definitely you will be able to.
Okay, good evening. My name's Sarah Lund, and I also got a shock when I noticed the time a few minutes ago. But I would like to get my opinion down here. I live at 2936 Henderson. So when I look out from my house, my sightline is that of single-story houses and oak trees. And we can see from the aerial photo, and Sylvia spoke on this so beautifully, and when she talked about this green belt, did you, I don't know if anybody looked around and noticed, but there was reverence in this room. We were still and we were quiet. And I loved the history. But I also loved Sylvia saying that, yes, the river does, there is a part, there's a spring or part of Bakewell that comes down. I know there is, because I've seen where it crosses on Midtown. If Rick had come to me, he has never come to me to tell me about this, I would have said, are you crazy? Why are you building there? There's a spring that goes right there, you're gonna have basement issues, you're gonna have these issues. Why is that green belt so viable? Why, why has it lived and thrived for so many years? There's a great water source there that runs right down, so a lot of us don't notice that it's there. But it is there. We have, we have wells. Neighbors have had some flood damage over the years because of this. So when I looked at the aerial photo and I see how small the rear lot is, and we've heard about all the variances that are required, it's almost to the point, I don't want to be judgmental, but when does it become overdone? When is it too much? Chris Heidelay had the Urban Forest Report. I think that Oak Bay spent probably quite a little bit of money on this report. The average canopy for Oak Bay right now is 33%, or at the time of his report. Henderson of Oak Bay has almost less than half of that. We only have 18% canopy right now. And Oak Bay's target is 40%. So for these variances in the development to go through, he is going to need to take down all of those trees. So we're actually then doing the opposite to what the Urban Forest Report is requiring us to do. So why are we, as a city, spending money on these reports to just then ignore them? For this little lot, we're going to ignore this report. And then, of course, we know that there's three lots to the west of Lot 23, and it will be repeated. There will be a precedent set. And of course, other properties will be built. And this will continue and continue. In the building plan, those trees are to be replanted. Nothing can be replanted to replace what we have there already. So I'm absolutely opposed to this development going through. Thank you.
Very much.
Hi, my name is Ingrid Charfella and I live at 2932 Henderson. I'm new to the area, but my mother has lived in this house for the last 35 years. I consider it a privilege to now own that house. It's, Oak Bay is Oak Bay. Everybody knows it's the desired place to live, if not in Canada, you know, that's a lot of people's dream. And that's for a reason. And that reason is precisely because it's a beautiful place to live. Seems that council has respected and done their utmost to keep it a beautiful, kind of oasis in the middle of chaos. When I go out, it's always lovely to come back and say, oh, okay, that's out there. It seems that that should be what continues. I'm not a very good, this is, I don't, this is the first time I've ever done this, so. There's another thing that I, hasn't been brought up, and I'm not sure if it's relevant, but B.C. assessment is not considering those lots. but B C assessment is not considering those lots buildable. If they were, they would be assessed at a far greater value. They're, the ones along there are between forty and whatever. So forty-six, yeah, something like that. Anyway, not, not the value of buildable lots. So we, surrounding people, have been paying our taxes in the thought that, okay, well, you know, we have rights as neighbors. Other people have rights to try and build, but setbacks and bylaws were created for a reason. And just because we happen to have larger lots behind doesn't mean that the impact is going to be diminished. As it sits now, I can see, I have cover at the moment. Some of the, some of my cover is being proposed to be removed. My mother nurtured her garden for, I'd say, thirty-five years. She's now going into a home and her great pleasure was the thought that we have the house and she will be able to come and visit, sit in her garden and just enjoy. She's ninety-three. She doesn't have a long time to live, I don't think, but she wants to enjoy it. So to, to have her pride and joy be overlooked by this, I'll call it a tower because that's basically what it's going to look like, I think is personally criminal. And, you know, it's going to impact the integrity of these, this community big time. It already has. I mean, look at all the people here who, who are devastated by this. And that's, I sincerely hope that this is looked upon as being something very substantial that's going to happen to, to this community. And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Okay, oh, yep, go ahead.
Esther Patterson, Woodland Crescent. Been a, quite a discussion on this proposal for development. And it seems, listening to it, that it's almost a request for council to make the lot fit the house rather than the house fit the lot. So it's a, it's a challenge and I know that throughout Canada, there's actually many lots that cannot be used exactly for what the owners hope them to be used for. So, you know, it really is finding then what you can do with it. But in the discussions that have been taking place, the one thing that I didn't really hear discussed, it was talked about the smaller house being in front and would you see the larger house to the rear? But it, it, all the discussions seem almost like this is one lot with two homes on it. We have to remember, I think, it's important to remember, that this is actually two lots. Albeit, an easement will be drafted to allow for access to the lot at the rear. It's still two lots and so in the future, the property can be resold, one lot at a time, both lots by the same owner if one owner continues to use them. So really, I think the, the real challenge is, what is the goal in the future? Will that smaller ho- house that's at the front remain a smaller house? Or will the lot be sold? Another owner come back to council and say, we would like to build a comfortable house for our family at the front of the lot and we need more room? And then you have the larger lot at the front with so much flex and variances being requested at the rear. What then does the council do in future about the front lot? So I think that's one thing that I didn't hear in the discussion is that these are clearly going to be two distinct lots with two distinct houses that can be transacted as individual or a double transaction. And I think that's important in the considerations also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So if there's no other questions from the public, I'm going to ask Mr. Humphries and if he likes his, his support to come and speak to any of the issues or questions that you'd like to.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, that was, that was a lot of, a lot of people standing up, so I, I just wanted to reach out and say, a lot of these people I haven't met yet. And, yeah, I, you know, I respect you coming here tonight and, and coming together and voicing your opinions. You know, I think at the end of the day, my aim here is to, is to build a house that's suitable for my family. So, you know, it's, yeah, it's, it sounds like there's a lot of emotions behind this and, you know, it's obviously hard to stand up here, but I'm kind of focusing on, on the future for, yeah, for my family and having a, a space that works for us. But it does, yeah, you know, it does, it certainly touches me that people are against it. And, yeah, so I, I guess I'd like to touch on a bunch of things. There's a lot of notes that have. So I'll just, I'll try to keep it brief and, and not emotional and not, you know, argumentative, obviously, in any way. So, yeah, just to start at, at Catherine, who first spoke. She, Russ and I talked about designs and we, we created the design so that no windows would actually be facing her property at all because we figured that, we thought it would, you know, it would be an invasion. It, she would lose some privacy by having a lot of windows facing into her lot. So we've eliminated all windows from the east side of the house. I know currently, obviously, privacy is again a concern. Currently, she does have a wire, about a four-foot house, sorry, four-foot fence. So my thought would be to create a more of a solid six-foot fence to create more privacy. So, and, and to touch on what Deborah said, Deborah mentioned earlier about, you know, that there is a footprint with, it would just be a really weird-looking house. In my opinion, I think it would be a bowling alley would be kind of the house, you know, it would be a really long and skinny, weird-looking house. And I'd, you know, trying to create a house that's a little bit more fits into the neighborhood and for a proper family. With regards to the trees, I think this is, a lot of the opinions have been brought forth with regards to the trees, which I totally respect. Our goal is not to remove the trees. We want to keep the trees. The current oak tree that's on the property, according to an Arborist report and, and, you know, I'm not making, I'm not making it up, it's just from an Arborist report, is that it is, it show, is showing a declining health. I do note that our neighbor on the, on the west side removed an oak tree from her property. And that's what she told me because of the oak tree was not safe and, and declining in health, disease, I don't, I don't know what, but she, she said that she got it removed via permit. Yeah, and, and she had another question with regards to the lot being, about the lot, so it is pre-existing and the road access. I think she had currents with, wasn't too sure how the road access would occur, so the road access would occur down the side of the house as per the drawings, just like, you know, similar to down the street. Yeah, and, and just to go on to Drew and Steve's points. So, yeah, nice, nice to meet you guys. I knocked on their door and dropped off two pieces of communication with them and, and didn't get a response. So I know that was one of the questions I had earlier about why didn't I talk to neighbors? So I was trying to, you know, never got a response after a couple tries. So they mentioned the oak tree again, yes, and I'm, I'm trying to save the oak tree. So the current oak tree, the Arborist, I actually had an independent Arborist report, which I don't think you guys have that document, although I did send it to Oak Bay. And it, with, with that Arborist report, they mentioned that the oak tree could potentially be saved, which I thought was great. Their thoughts were that, that at the time of excavation, they would want to be present, you know, to, to see if it's, if it is possible. So that is my goal, is not to just totally remove it. My goal is to, is to try and save the oak tree. But again, it's, you know, currently my, my trampoline is right underneath this oak tree where my kids play. So it's, it's a, it is a, the tree is in declining health. So, you know, I guess I would have concerns of, of, of course, the oak tree and especially, yeah, so. The, Drew and Steve also mentioned character, which is, which is a really valid point. You know, we wish to retain the character by keeping the front house because it is of character nature. Also, the house that we have built or that we've designed in the back, you know, it isn't modern. It is more of a character kind of style. Just go on to some more notes here. And, yeah, so great to see Sylvia again. I did reach out to her once. We did chat face-to-face. And I sent, you know, dropped off another piece of communication with her and didn't hear back, but great to see her here tonight. She mentions she's lived in Oak Bay her whole life. I've also lived in Oak Bay my whole life. You know, when we were chatting face-to-face, I know her concerns were, which is very valid with all the other neighboring lots being developed on. You know, I got the sense she wasn't too worried about my property because it's kind of on, just the way her property is, is, if you look at it, doesn't fully affect her, but I can see her concern when we were talking was that if the precedent set with, which, with mine was built on, all those other ones that she backs on to would also be built on. And of course, you know, the precedent, I guess, was sort of already set in the nineties with twenty-fourty and twenty-fourty-two Neal Street that were already built in the rear legal lots. The situation is really rare. I mean, there's no other situation that I know of in Oak Bay that has, you know, just these legal lots is kind of sitting there. So it's, it's not like this is, can happen in anyone's backyard. You know, they are, they are legal lots. It's not just, anyone can build a house in their backyard. So there's a very isolated, rare situation. And I, you know, I, I feel it's a legal way, you know, to bring in, fill housing, you know, and adding housing to a kind of, you know, a very expensive neighborhood. She also mentions, sorry, there was a mention of elementary school, so, you know, my, my son's actually starting at Willow's, I think it was. Sorry, I can't remember who it was, but they were a teacher there. So, you know, I, that's kind of one of the reasons why I wanted to be in the neighborhood is, is for the schools and for Willow's Elementary School, you know, which is where I also grew up, going to school. Again, the oak tree we chatted, she chatted about, which is, which I kind of already touched on. And mentioning of the creek too, which is, which is interesting. I've, you know, I've lived there for, for almost four years this July. I've never seen any standing water in the, in the back rear lot, ever. So I, I don't know how, yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I've never seen any kind of creek or standing water back there, so don't know if that would be an issue. But yes, I will certainly reach out to more, my, my goal here was to, was to kind of put forth this proposal. Once, you know, hopefully received, I would go out and, and, and talk to more neighbors, certainly. You know, I wasn't, wasn't expecting a, a lot of neighbors against me at, at this point in time. I've never done this before. So, you know, my kind of hope with council is that they give me an opportunity to chat with more neighbors and perhaps have, have my, you know, have the neighbors that I have chatted to that, that are in support and perhaps might speak for my, my proposal instead of more just one-sided. One of the notes was Hunter mentioned a fire sprinkler, so I believe down the street, the houses, they have in-house sprinkler systems. So you don't need actually a fire truck to go down the side access. They have a fully sprinklerized in-house system, I believe, which is what I would be installing in our house so that a, you know, because there's no turnaround, the house will be fully sprinklerized, which, which does exist. Again, more talk about the oak tree, which again, I'm trying to save. It is declining in health, but I'm hope to keep it. And my Arborist report mentioned that at excavation, you'd be present at that time to see if it's viable. And if it was viable, of course, we'd have to maintain, constantly maintaining the, watching the oak tree to make sure that it doesn't further decline. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a tough situation because, you know, at, at first, I'm kind of thinking of my family and of course, not, you know, having heard all the neighbors, it's, yeah, it's hard to, hard to take. You know, I mean, whatever the outcome, my, my hope is that we'll, you know, we'll be neighborly again, friendly. I haven't met, you know, I've been there four years and haven't met everyone here except for maybe two people because they kind of, they're on different streets where they kind of face me at the back. Almost done. Thanks for, for bearing with me. Yeah, there is another, you know, Ingrid and Mark, Ingrid spoke and again, I, I thank her for coming too. I won't bring up the situation that occurred when I tried to speak to her. But, yeah, it was, it was, it was kind of awful unfortunately, but that's, again, I'm not going to talk too much further into that. But anyways, I think the conclusion is just, you know, I'd like to, I'd like the opportunity to have, you know, to, I guess, to speak to in front of council and, and kind of have my own, perhaps my own neighbors that are, that are in support of this. That's pretty much it for my, for my long-winded notes. I don't know if Russ, you have anything to add?
Just a couple of things. I guess, like, the, the situation is unfortunate is we're dealing with a, an odd piece of property that's landlocked behind another piece of property. And there happens to be at least, what, three more like it besides yours? And, and we're not necessarily thinking that what we're, we think what we're proposing, considering what we've got to work with, after lots of consideration for the tree, access, things like that, is probably the best that we can work with without presenting a rezoning of some kind. Not saying that a rezoning wouldn't be something we'd consider, but it's hard because it's not, it's not, it's not easy just to come in with a rezoning and say, we want to try and do this. But we know we have opposition now, obviously, we have to, to deal with. But we also do have a, an existing legal lot that can be built on. And what can be put on that lot may not be the best use of the property, like, without a variance, for instance. Because we have worked that out. We did this quite a few, like, at least a year ago. We worked out what could go on the property and it's not attractive. It's not, it's an odd, a very small, strange-looking house. You know, we'd obviously try our best to make it look attractive, but it's, it's just very small and very weird-looking. And I also just wanted to bring up, when people keep saying this is a small lot, it is a small lot, but for years in other parts of Victoria, the small lot zone for Victoria is two-hundred-and-sixty square meters and allows a house of two-thousand-and-sixteen square feet plus a full basement to be built on it. That's the, that's the maximum allowed on those kind of lots. So just so, to put it in perspective, it's not as small as people want to say it is. In Oak Bay, it is for sure. But in other parts of the city, it's not actually considered that small.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more questions from the committee to the applicant?
Do you want questions or do you want?
More to the applicant before we come into discussion? No, okay, maybe we should just, yeah, okay. Okay, let's come back into discussion, see if we can get a motion on the floor to, okay, thank you.
This didn't come to the Advisory Planning Commission and I think that, that is a step, that the next step that, that might be possible if there were, if there were a possibility of moving this in a if there were a possibility of moving this in a, in a, something that was more amenable to the neighbors. And what I've, from what I've heard, this format is not amenable to the neighbors. And so my initial inclination was to send it back to the Advisory Planning Commission and see if they could come up with some recommendations to, to help this homeowner find some kind of compromise that would be acceptable to everybody. And, but I don't see that as possible in this. I, I just don't see how we can get from, I think would have to come down a story in order for it to be something that everybody couldn't accept, as well as something that didn't bring the tree down. And so it's my unfortunate opinion that it has to be denied.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, there's a lot of things that have been brought up tonight. And I, number one, I appreciate the fact that you're a young person living in Oak Bay with a young family that wants to stay in Oak Bay. I truly do appreciate that. I look at the, the lot that you have been dealt, so to speak. And I kind of go, you know what, it's unfortunate that you couldn't kind of take, you know, 20 feet from your front lot and add it to your back lot. And then maybe it's a little bit more viable and you can build something a little bit different, something like that. Here's the really unfortunate thing, is that we don't have a housing strategy in Oak Bay right now. If we had a housing strategy, maybe something like this could have been addressed. Some, these small lots that we have, that we see coming up, maybe those could have been addressed. And we could have had rules in place that would have said, you know what, all you can build on this particular sized lot is a one-story basement, this big, whatever it might be. If we had this housing strategy, that might have happened. Unfortunately, we don't have the housing strategy. You're stuck in a position where you have a legal lot that is not in, in a, a great location to be able to be built on. And it, so it, it kind of puts you in between a rock and a hard place. And it puts us in between a rock and a hard place as well, because for me, I can't, I can't look at the design that you've brought to us, albeit it's a good design for a little bit bigger lot perhaps. I, I can't look at that and say, yes, I would like to see that go ahead. Not after hearing the concerns of the neighbors and not after looking at the number of variances that would have to be, that would have to be taken into account on this particular lot. You know, there's a, a lot of people have said some great things here tonight in regards to sightlines and trees and things like that, which are all very, very important for the streetscape and for the livability of this area. I think also, an interesting point was brought up by Ms. Patterson, which is, you know, if you build a house like that in the back, then eventually, somebody could build something different in the front that could also be bigger and take up more space. And then all of a sudden, you have these two much larger houses than what was ever there before, or was ever intended before, on a lot. And, and so that also would change the whole streetscape and the whole, I think, livability of that area. So I know that you're trying to look, as a young family, a way to bring a legal lot into viability. But it just doesn't seem to me that this is what would be viable on this lot. So I couldn't actually support this moving forward. I would hope that in the future, we could find some way to get something on that lot for you. But I don't think what you've brought forward is, is the thing that we could, that I could support, so, sorry.
Okay, so we've got a, okay, Counselor Murdock?
I'm not sure I'm going to add much. We don't think we have a motion on the table yet. So I certainly appreciate the applicant. This, this is a tough process to go through, very tough. You're coming forth with a proposal. There's sort of built in some conflict and these sorts of things unfortunately, between, between everybody who has an interest. So I just want to identify, I mean, I think the pluses of the application that are here, the attempt to retain the old house, a very positive step. You know, I think we're trying to find ways of finding some gentle density into our neighborhood, so we certainly appreciate the efforts to do that. And I think the, the discussion around the patio houses, I will say, when that discussion happened as part of the floor area review, that was really designed for larger lots. It doesn't really work architecturally on a small lot, so you can get enough, you know, space on, on one lot to do that. You know, on the other side of that, there's no guarantees that that front house will get kept, right? There's no, there's no heritage or anything else. It's just, it's goodwill. It is, to my mind, a fairly large ask of neighbors to ask, you know, to have a two-story house tucked in so close to all the neighboring lots. And at the end of the day, the possible loss of a tree is certainly considerable consideration as part of this. And at the end of the day, I, it was interesting listening to the Director of Building and Acting Director of Building and Planning, talking about the process for, for why this would be considered or recommended. And it's funny, I went through a very similar process. I said, looked at it and said, well, okay, can it even be developed? And, you know, yes, you can get access through. That was the first part of the variance. So I can see that and I'd be supportive of that variance. The second part of it is, can you build a reasonable house on it? And, and when I went through that and looked at it, the reality is, I don't think that the house, the house is reasonable. But again, is it reasonable within that lot? And I, and I really struggle with that frankly. I think the, the small, small setbacks, touching on so many properties in all directions, makes it very hard. And you recognizing that it's almost impossible to build. I, I agree, you know, if you do the numbers on it, there's not much space there to build a house. So I don't know what the answer is here. I, I do wish that we had a bit more direction on these sorts of things from our, from our planning perspective. But I have, I really can't, I, there's no, at the end of the day, I'd look for justifications for variance, particularly on a new house. So any new, new house application, try and find the justifications. And really, on this case, the justifications are all around. Can, you know, they're sort of required to build a reasonable house on the lot. But that's not necessarily a hardship in and of itself. I mean, I don't think the intent of this lot, looking at it, was necessarily that it would be developed. So to find a way of making that happen is, is a tough way of going. So I, I too, don't necessarily think that moving this to a planning commission, they're just a recommending body. They'll come back to us. I mean, I think at the end of the day, I would love to see these kinds of lots, these oversized lots, these things, you know, have some sensitive, you know, duplexes and other sort of approaches to these, to infill. That can be done a little bit more, you know, sympathetically. And the reason I asked about that setback, if, if, if this was one contiguous lot and you put a duplex there, that would still leave a pretty substantive, you know, sort of 30-plus foot, 35-foot setback from the, from the rear lot line. That would sort of continue that contiguous green space. And I think that's a much better model in terms of maintaining sort of the, the feel and comfort of a, of a neighborhood. So thank you.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair.
Can I just stop you? I'm sorry. It looks like we're going to go over our time again, aren't we?
I'll move that we extend the meeting till 11. Well, we still have other things, 30.
Okay, Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for bringing the proposal forward. And thank you also to the neighbors for, for risking to come to the microphone and just to, to speak. I very much appreciate everyone who had a chance to speak. This is a very difficult lot, a very difficult situation. B.C. Assessment says it's a 50 by 62-foot sized lot. And you're right, values it at about 46 now, or something like that. It was very useful process that I went, I think we went through. And I'm not sure what the Advisory Planning Commission actually could provide. It's just because it is such a, such a difficult lot with what the actual proposal that's come forward. I've heard, you know, a couple of others' suggestions, looking at maybe duplex or maybe looking at some possible changes. I heard the proponent, or the proponent's designer, you know, talk, talk about a possible rezoning. And I wonder out loud whether that might be the only solution for this unusual situation. Looking up RD1 zoning, I see that the minimum lot size is 7,137 square feet. So if you did happen to compare, combine these two, you would be well under, well within your rights to, to consider an RD1. So I'd like to move, that'd be right, option three, that'd be recommended to council that the proposal be denied.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm just going to quickly add my advice that, that if this were to come back, I mean, I think that we have, we have as a community some work to do as far as the residential infill process that we began and then abandoned. And if now, you know, we're looking at secondary suites to start with. But I think in the next couple of years, the next council will have to really get to work on building those bylaws that will make this much more clear and make this a much less contentious process. And I would encourage everybody to participate in that process as those bylaws are developed. But, but to me, if you're, if we'd sent you to the commission, it would be, it would be a waste of everybody's energy. Because I just don't see that this is as supportable in its current form. And I think that a small lot development in the backyard is, is acceptable to Oak Bay. And I think we heard that in our OCP, as long as it respects the green space and as long as it respects the streetscape. And, and we did hear over and over again that people wanted small, single-level homes that they could downsize to. And I know that because of land prices, that's made that, that proposal is not as appealing. But I, I would suggest that that, that's probably the best bet. And that would be the most amenable to the neighbors, something that's single-story and, and a single level. But that's just my two bits. Thanks.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. We have two quick ones possibly. Let's see if we can get through these. We have a development permit at 3475 Ripon Road. I'll have staff speak to the applicant. Yeah, hi, hi folks. If you could, because we're trying to get through our agenda here, if you don't mind. Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Ask staff to please speak to the applicant.
Thank you, Chair. So this application for a development permit is to construct a storage area for small watercraft at the Royal Victoria Yacht Club. The works would involve filling a portion of the foreshore area with rock and then capping and surfacing the area for storage and dinghy and kayak launch. The larger boat storage area would also be regraded to improve surface drainage. Because the site is within the shoreline's development permit area, it requires an approved development permit to proceed. The application was originally submitted in December 2015. It was reviewed by staff and considered by the Advisory Planning Commission in April 2016, who recommended approval. Before bringing it forward to council, however, staff waited to receive confirmation of provincial approval of the works before bringing it forward. That approval was received March of this year. An environmental report was also submitted with the application. The report speaks to low biological productivity for the area, noting the works are not likely to cause serious harm to fish. No authorization is required from the Department of Fisheries and Oceans. The report does set out a number of items that should be adhered to during construction, such as timing of work, sediment control measures, and other best practices. Those items have been incorporated into the conditions attached to the draft development permit. Staff note that the proposal is supported by OCP policy to encourage this type of use and by OCP shoreline guidelines, which are laid out in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Are there any questions from the committee to staff? Okay, no questions. The applicant to come up, unless the committee has questions to the applicant? Doesn't look like they are. The committee is clearly getting pooped out here, but let's just, I'm wanting to go home. Okay, so is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak to the application? Doesn't appear so.
I move the staff recommendation.
Okay, wait a second. Any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor? None opposed? And none opposed? Okay. There is an upside to being at the end of the, a long agenda. So, and that was it. A fast decision. Okay. So item number 10 is the Energy Step Code. And we have a report from the Acting Director of Building and Planning. If I can ask the staff to speak to the report?
So as mentioned, the province has adopted a new energy step code, which is intended to ensure that all new construction within the province, that's all new builds, not any renovations, that those are net zero energy-ready by 2032. That ties with the National Building Code of Canada, which is moving toward the same targets for 2030. So the code itself consists of a stepped program. So the lower steps are less onerous for achieving energy efficiency. For example, step one would match the current building code, and the higher steps for more energy efficiency. Step five of the residential program meets the net zero target. Similarly, steps three and four for commercial and multifamily. Part of this program, as rolled out by the province, involved extensive industry consultation. At this point, municipalities can also voluntarily join into the step code program. But where they do, the province expects the municipality to undertake its own consultation. Both Victoria and Sanich have undertaken a public process to receive feedback from interested organizations and local contractors. Victoria's council has recently adopted a step code program. And the targets for their program are to start with step one in November of this year and move up to step three in 2020. Sanich is considering a similar approach. At this point, staff are requesting direction for how to proceed. If council is interested in pursuing the step code for Oak Bay, we would recommend building on the work that's already been undertaken by Victoria and Sanich and holding a further public session in June. We would then come back to council with additional information and a sample program for how to move ahead with the step code for Oak Bay.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Any questions from the committee to staff? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. Very much in favor of moving forward with this. And I think it's quite reasonable to align with what Victoria and Sanich are doing and also building on their public consultation. I understand we have to do public consultation, which I'm certainly in favor of as well. The question I have for general staff and possibly also for the chair is that I understand in June, possibly the Oak Bay Task Force on Public Engagement may be wanting to do some public meetings around that time. So I worry about this clashing with that in terms of, of possible. I just wanted to ask the question whether there, there might be a consideration of, of a clash of too many meetings in that month? And possibly a consideration of moving this maybe further up in the summer.
We have not set a specific date for what that public consultation would be yet. One of the first things we would do is look at the calendar to see if there are any other conflicts for particular dates. Always a good process is to not do any kind of public consultation in the summer. One of the things that was requested by a lot of the contractors through the other sessions was that they were looking for consistency across the board with municipalities, so that they know what to expect when they're coming in the door. That being said, with Victoria looking for a November 2018 start date, if this is something that council wishes to proceed with, by the time we prepare bylaws and work through the public consultation and come back to council with the results of that public consultation, timing is starting to get a little bit tight.
Any other questions from the committee? Counselor Murdock?
It's actually not a really question, but just to add on to that, we're also expecting probably in June to have our heritage conservation area public consultation pieces. So it is going to be a jam of everything into that, into that one month. But that's, I think we, the, the recommendation here is fine in terms of, in terms of doing that. We'll just do our best efforts to squeeze it all in.
Okay, so if there's no more questions, let's see, wait a minute, do we need to ask the public? Yeah, anybody from the public who want to comment on this? Okay, that's.
I think it's important that we maintain consistency, so I'd be prepared to move this recommendation.
In seconds.
Okay, so any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. Move second discussion, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Okay, good night.